I call this meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Court, please call a roll.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Here.
Councilmember Drynes.
Here.
Councilmember Mail.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz. Councilmember Simmons.
President.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
I imagine that Councilmember Schultz will be along shortly. I just wanted to note that last week I did take the item on the food trucks and the food vendors off of this week's agenda. You'll note that the city manager is going to provide a report, but I had to move that off of this meeting, and that'll be coming up in about two weeks. Next Monday, want to remind folks that we have a presentation from the State Highway Administration, and that's a briefing on bridge replacements. That should be interesting, given some of their proposed projects. We have a first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code for redistricting scheduled for next week. And we have work session items with continued discussion of this evening's opening of the financial matters and budget priorities, and we'll also be discussing the large grant requests next week. Monday, February 4th, we have what we're now calling a presentation from the Center for Watershed Protection on Maple Avenue Outfall Pollution Source Tracking, and that's when we have the revisions to the city code to address food vendors. And I think that covers a couple things in a couple upcoming meetings that I just wanted to call people's attention to. I don't have anything for the record, so we will move to public comment. And that's a chance for anybody to address anything either that's not on our agenda or that is on our agenda this evening, since we don't have any voting session this evening. So we welcome your comments, and if you come to the microphone and identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes, and we'll go to Mr. Lovelace in the back first.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelace. My name's Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. And I want to tell you, we had a great time on inauguration day. There's a lot of people down there, especially we had some good people down at the demonstration, the Ark of Justice protesting the use of those drones over in Pakistan and Afghanistan. Because a lot of innocent people, a lot of civilians, and a lot of children are being killed by those things. They're like these small planes that are pilotless, and they're remote-controlled, and they fly over and they do the killing. We had a pretty good demonstration. They carried some model drones, and they carried the peace sign, and other people carried other banners and signs, you know, asking money to be directed toward schools and stuff. And that was great. We had a lot of people down there. We marched from Malcolm X Park down 16th Street to K Street, and then we went to different places after that. And also, the week before that, a couple of days before that, on Saturday, we had the Martin Luther King Peace Walk down in Anacostia, and we're calling for a lot of money to be redirected to our schools, because they want to close 15 schools in DC. And that's real tragic, 15 schools being closed, yet they can afford to keep this war going, and they can afford to keep these drones being built, and they can afford to increase their budget, yet we can't have our schools. Something's wrong there. We had a really great demonstration, really good turnout, so we are getting people who are interested and people who are getting empowered to be able to feel like they can do something. If you feel like you can't do something, you can at least come out to a demonstration. That doesn't cost anything, and it's not much trouble to get to. You can always take Metro, I get a ride from a friend, like I get a ride from a friend, but if I can get down there when I can't, you guys, other guys can do it too. And this weekend, we're having the Million Mom March Against Guns. We are marching for gun control. After what happened in Sandy Hook, the elementary school in Newtown, Pennsylvania, I feel I have to get down to that demonstration. I have to, because I suffered a relapse of my condition because of that, because of that shooting. I got real sick as a result of that. Almost landed in the hospital. Now I'm sick for almost a month. And I would like to tell people, if they feel like they can't do anything, you can do something. You can come down and join the demonstration. It doesn't cost anything, and you can speak out against guns, and you can ask your city councils to propose to stop the guns and ask them what we can do to do our power to stop the guns, and ask for gun control, ask for removal of those assault weapons and assault magazines, and ask to have proper universal checks on people.
Thanks very much, Mr. Lovelace.
Thank you very much for letting me share, and please come down to the demonstration this weekend.
Other public comment.
My name's Wally Malikoff. I'm co-chair of Progressive Neighbors, but I'm here as an individual resident of Ward Five. I just want to voice my support for the proposals that are being drawn up about that Tim and Seth have started a discussion about greater voter registration through same-day voter registration, through giving packets to tenants. I know there's some discussion about trying to gain access to apartment buildings for candidates, which would be a great thing, so that we would include more people in the voting process, and I'm here to support it, and I'd like to see, you know, as the proposal develops, I hope there'll be more discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment.
Hi, I'm Rob Ritchie, Tacoma Park resident and with Fair Vote, and also really excited to see what Seth and Tim have come forward with. And I know some of you have seen the survey we did last summer for the special election in the Ward Five City Council race, but I just thought it was quite interesting that in this hotly contested race in which two, well, I guess there were three candidates and two working particularly hard in the ward, and yet it's still 15% turnout of registered voters. And the survey, which we had done actually to sort of see how instant runoff would work in that kind of election, we also asked about people and their characteristics and their age and income and so on, and it was quite instructive to me to see some of the disparities between the people who live in the ward and the those who voted. Like, for instance, the ward is, if I can see it right, 26% white, and of those who did the survey, which was more than half of those who participated, it was 65% white. And for those who had a graduate degree, a professional degree, 56% of voters had a graduate degree, and the census data reports that 10% of those in the ward have a graduate degree. So that I think anything that can be done is going to be important to kind of generate a conversation about participation, about what the council does, and I think just to underscore the value of the broader resolution is, there's not going to be any single solution. I think same-day voter registration is really good. I think it probably won't affect this kind of dynamic that much, and that we just need to keep looking at what that's going to be, and I think having a conversation about that both here in Tacoma Park and elsewhere, too, is just going to be very healthy, and so applause for having that be put forward.
Thank you. Other public comment. Seeing none, we'll move along to council comments. Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. So today, I didn't realize I had a meeting at 4:30. I didn't have a chance to actually organize my thoughts about gold stars. I'm doing this straight from the hip, so here we go. It would be remiss of me to not mention yesterday's actual inauguration day festivities. I know the actual day of inauguration is the 20th Sunday, but yesterday was pretty special. There was so much energy, so much excitement, even for a second inauguration of a president, an experience in renewing our democracy, and even from my TiVo TV, I didn't get to see it live, I had to see it recorded. The spirit was in the air. I think it caught my breath when I saw the cameras back off of the mall with all the flags waving and all the people so excited. The whole day spoke to the energy and the spirit of hope, which I think is what the president is actually about. There were two really memorable things. One was, and I just mentioned it to some of my colleagues up here, was the good president, re-elected President Obama chewing gum while he watched the parade, and as some of the announcers said, it was Nicorette gum. I know he's having a bit of a battle with that beast called smoking, but there he was, that was very cool. And the second one was someone carrying a sign saying, "I am the dream." And that really moved me, because Martin Luther King had the dream, and we're beginning to actually be the dream, so that was pretty awesome. But gold stars, I couldn't, I would really be remiss if there wasn't gold stars. So six years ago, I opened my Tacoma Park newsletter, and right down below the fold on the inside, it said they were looking for members of a committee, and the committee was the Recreation Committee, and I went yahoo! That's what I know what to do, that's my area of expertise. I'm a physical education major by education and also by vocation. So I applied to the committee, and in those days, you had to come before the council and get voted in, or you had to be approved. I don't think it's, it's not quite that way anymore. And I went to the first meeting, and guess what? I got elected chairperson! Oh, yahoo! It was a thrill. So the first meeting that we had was called Pie in the Sky, and the whole committee sat down and filled up, and I'm going to say it was a 14-by-28 sheet of poster board about what they wanted from the Recreation Department, what we could do as a committee to enhance the Recreation Department for the residents of the city of Tacoma Park. And last week, the city manager made an announcement about what the Recreation Department had done over the past week, and that bears repeating. I really appreciate, she gave me her copy this morning, because I got cut really short. I didn't get the emails done, so I didn't have this. Everyone's always been talking about, "We don't have a gym," and I've always said, "Yes, we do, we have a gym, it just happens to be across New Hampshire Avenue, right down around Sligo Creek, cross over, and hook a left." Two weeks ago, the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center sported a fitness expo, attended by 250 people, and that's pretty darn exciting to get that many people in that facility. I know it's not the most beautiful facility, and I know it's not upgraded, but 250 people is a lot. Fifteen young folks volunteered for Martin Luther King Day last week, and that was also co-sponsored in partnership. The whole day was Recreation Department, they were a partner with three other groups at Tacoma Park. Fifty to 60 people attended drop-in classes, and from that, they got 25 walk-in registrations. This is probably the crown, because when I got here, I kept saying, "We don't have any developmental basketball. We should have some developmental, coeducational basketball." Developmental, not win-win-win at all costs, but developmental. And this past week, 615 youngsters began the winter basketball program, and that went from, I guess our first year was about 400. So in five years, to go to 615 is really remarkable. And at the same time, 10 kids went skiing, and I guess last week, 18 kids went to a Wizards game. I got to say, huge, enormous, wonderful gold stars to the Tacoma Park Recreation Department for a job over and above and beyond the call of duty. They have taken what little facilities we have, and believe me, our facilities are not exactly green belts facilities, and they have turned the program into a really exciting adventure for not only little kids and medium-sized kids, but for us big kids, too. So great gobs of gold stars to the Recreation Department and to Gregory Clark, who is now the leader and most extraordinary. The other honorable mention goes to Hank Frensky. "I Live My Life," I hope this is right side up, by his calendar that he produces every year. These are 40 things that make Tacoma Park so special, and if you haven't gotten one, you ought to go out and try and source one up, because it is, there are remarkable things. There's something every month that makes Tacoma Park a special place to live, and thank you for your time and listening to me.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just be brief tonight. The residents should have all gotten today a letter from the city about kitchen composting. For folks who haven't seen it yet, or who might not look through their mail carefully, it's an announcement about a food waste, essentially a kitchen waste composting collection program. And the way it works is that the city has set up a website to take in applications from residents, and it's first come, first served, so first 300 households to go to the website, fill in the form, and get your name on this list, will then be in the program, and it's expected to start February 15th. So I just wanted to make people aware of that, given that it's probably a quick thing that'll disappear.
Yes, I do want to caution, some of it might be in certain areas, so I don't know if what you got was for everybody or if that was for areas, but we've got two different pilot programs starting. They are both really exciting, and we're going to see how they work and which one works better, so we know what to go forward with.
Great. Thank you.
So it's possible that somebody might not get that letter?
It's possible. I will have to check with Darryl.
I'm just going to mention a couple things briefly. A city resident started a change.org petition to have the city establish a fenced, off-leash dog park, and all of the emails that get generated by that petition on change.org go to me, lucky me. And so my inbox has been inundated over the last two days with emails, and I just thought I'd let people know that as of noon today, they say that 160 people signed, I've only gotten emails from 150. And of those, 73 lived in Tacoma Park, 77 lived elsewhere, including all over the world, American Samoa, Turkey, India, you name it. It was directed toward people in Tacoma Park and nearby areas who might use a dog park in Tacoma Park, and I guess maybe we'll be having some visits from dogs from all over the world. And I also wanted to point out that the acting city manager had provided the council with a, I guess newly posted item from Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning about a process to figure out how to put dog parks in downtown Silver Spring, and they have some very interesting information that includes why we need them, where the existing dog parks are, and the preliminary program of requirements, which I thought was very instructive, because they're looking at the very urban area of downtown Silver Spring, and they're looking for existing parkland, they're looking for good walking access, underutilized areas of parkland where a dog park would not displace another dog, desired park use, areas outside of environmentally sensitive constrained or forested land areas, adequate parking, and adequate distance and buffers from adjacent residents, and one of the things they're looking for is a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, which is basically a fairly large area. I thought, gee, that's the size of my lot, that's considered to be a quarter acre. So it's very interesting to see what the county's considered for a very urban area of downtown Silver Spring, and it addressed in their criteria some of the constraints that the council had when we looked at trying to find an area for a dog park about three years ago. So I imagine we'll be having some continued discussion about dog parks sometime in the not-too-distant future. I also wanted to let folks know that it was a very inspiring memorial service that the family held for Norm Gleichman, who died about a week and a half ago. That memorial service was held on Sunday, and there were between 400 and 500 people there, and it was just amazing to hear the outpouring of very interesting information and stories about how he affected people's lives, and it was very interesting to see the broad spectrum of people from Tacoma Park and elsewhere show up. I don't think I've ever been to a memorial service with anywhere near that number of people. And the location where it was held didn't seat about 150 of them, and they stood through an hour and a half service, and as far as I know, nobody left. So it was just amazing to see that outpouring for him. And finally, I just wanted to note that right before I came here this evening, I was watching the national news, and on CBS, they had about a five-minute segment that featured our own former police chief Drew Tracy, who is a recognized expert on active shooter scenarios. He's now at George Mason University, and he was featured talking about training of police officers and how it has all changed in the last number of years, training them rather than waiting for the SWAT team, that they should go in and run toward the shooter and try and have an effect on that. So even though he was only here for a relatively short period of time, I was very glad to see our own Drew Tracy featured as the national expert on the national news. Any other council comments? Okay, we'll move along to city managers' comments.
Okay, I've got several different things. As you mentioned, the food truck discussion will be in two weeks. The, now I'm confused, is it two weeks or one week? Two weeks.
Two, February 4th.
But, that's right. But in your package up here, there was just the report from the Old Tacoma Business Association Food Truck Summary. It was going to be passed out as part of that larger discussion, but we didn't want to wait for that, so you can at least get it now. When we do have the discussion about food trucks in two weeks, it will be a broader discussion that talks about code requirements and some options related to food trucks in a variety of locations or uses in Tacoma Park. I wanted to mention that there's an Emergency Preparedness Committee Holiday Party and new member recruitment on Thursday of this week at 7:30 PM in the hydrangea room, so I hope people come to that. I got a call today from Christopher Bishop of State Highway Administration talking about the bridge replacement on New Hampshire Avenue over Sligo Creek. He's just starting to get some information about it, but he did want to let us know that over the next week or two, we may see some SHA staff out putting up detour signs. The detour signs will have covers over them, but you'll start seeing them out, and there will be a project meeting in February, but they haven't set the date yet, so we'll be looking for that, where we get to sit down and go over the details about what's proposed for the bridge replacement.
Is this on?
Yeah.
Doesn't sound, okay. I thought that we were going to be talking about that next week when the SHA is here.
There will be that, but this will be the more detailed meeting where the community gets to also sit down and kind of go through plans.
And what about meeting, be in the community?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
But they've just got the, they've just got the project manager on board, so details haven't been set yet. He just wanted to give me the heads up, if we saw some people walking around out there, that we knew what was going on.
Thank you.
He did mention that at this point, they might do a little bit of work this fall, this winter, because it's winter time, you can't do a lot. Part of the first phase would be building a pedestrian bridge over Sligo Creek near, right near where the actual roadway is, so that, and we're trying to figure out how that works, so that's something to follow up on, but that would be the first step that wouldn't actually affect the driving. Yes?
That would be a non-permanent bridge or a permanent?
A non-permanent bridge. And then the whole end of the project is estimated for about a year from now, in mid-to-late spring of 2014. So we'll see how that goes.
I'll say.
And just to following, just to let you know that the Maryland Municipal League Conference will be June 23rd to 26th, so we'll be starting to collect your information on hotel reservations and that kind of thing, so wanted to alert you about that. That's all.
And there were questions for the city manager. Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned the food trucks up at Tacoma Junction and other places in the city. I'm working, you know, the needs and priorities of my constituents in Ward Four are a little different than some other places in the city, and I'm working with an organization that would like to sell produce in a location on Maple Avenue, and I wanted to check with you to see who I should work with and staff to make sure that we meet all the ordinances and restrictions and permitting requirements that would make that possible.
I think, why don't you just contact me? We've got Emily Cohen working on the regulations and things, but that's going to be coming to you to talk out the concepts about, and so you'll actually be able to help direct how things need to be changed, so that a variety of different kinds of trucks could be used.
All right. Would that be trucks, though, right? Or would it?
I don't think it's a truck now, it's...
But it's some kind of a stand or a...
It's a temporary stand, right?
We'll look into that. Perhaps we can talk off...
I'll send you the particulars tomorrow, and then we can see where we go from there.
I appreciate it, that'd be good, thanks.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Mail.
Yeah, my question was in regard to the detours. So those routes have already been set?
Yes, the detours are to, for the truck, for the vehicles that would be turning onto Sligo Creek Parkway off of New Hampshire, and it's basically to send people down to Eastern Avenue. It's, if you were trying to go, you know, if you're coming south on New Hampshire, and you would normally turn right on to Sligo Creek Parkway, the goal is not to have them turn right onto 410, but to continue down to Eastern, because at some point, they're going to be resurfacing 410 during the same part of this discussion, you know, part of the construction. And so it's fairly standard signage. Happy to send you a little bit...
I'm not sure, I guess I can't quite picture the route.
Well, if you were trying to go east towards Silver Spring from New Hampshire, the object is to not take Sligo Creek Parkway, but to go further south to Eastern Avenue.
Oh, eight, and then around, got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the city manager? Anything else that you need to cover?
You know, you send people on Eastern Avenue, and then they drive past the Tacoma Metro Station. Blair Road in the District of Columbia gets massive backed up already, and, you know, to the point where the DC government has been talking for several years about realigning the streets there, and I could anticipate in the afternoon rush hour in particular that will cause a further mess of several hours duration.
I think that one of the things that's going to happen is that the folks who we studied before, related to the Ritchie Avenue and Sligo Park Hills study, came from quite a bit north of Tacoma Park, and so taking the Beltway or University are their more likely options for getting people eastbound.
So we'll find out if they're going to have signage indicating that before they get to Sligo Creek Parkway. Thank you. We don't have any minutes to adopt. Is there any legislative update?
Just a couple items. Did want to mention that I understand that the proposed bill that we have to minimize widening of 410, or prohibit additional vehicular lanes of 410 in Tacoma Park, has at least dropped for writing in the legislature, and we should be getting a copy of that within the next few days, and I'll share it with you. I also have a list of upcoming budget hearings.
Could you describe that in a little bit more detail, given that the public has never, I believe, heard about that issue or the legislation?
Sure. One of the things that we're trying to do is to somehow codify the intention to not add additional lanes, vehicular lanes to Route 410, East West Highway, Philadelphia, Ethan Allen, in Tacoma Park, between New Hampshire Avenue and Chicago, and to have lang... language very similar to that that Prince George's County has put into the state code that prohibits state funding for a purpose of that kind of expansion. We think we have a very strong case to make, because there's been a lot of confusion over the years about maintenance responsibility, ownership, and the history of 410 is quite different than other state highways around the state. And this would be a way to help ensure that there's not a decision at some point by state highway to widen the road. It does, I think, you know, there's always some different kinds of options, but, and I don't see that state highway wants to do this, but it does help kind of formulate and have a different place for them to look, to say, gee, we're not going to widen the road. And so that's something that we're looking for. Yes?
Just a reminder, at least from my point of view, it would be good to say that the state, not only that the state wouldn't spend state funds, but the state will not solicit or administer funds for the widening. In other words, it's conceivable money could come from some other source than the state, and we want to preclude their having anything to done with, do with collecting money or administering it, if possible.
I'll see if that's possible.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. We will move to the presentation this evening, which is from the Board of Elections, and they're going to provide us with a briefing on potential RFP for election vendors. I want to remind my colleagues that this presentation is going to be a little bit different from the normal presentations. Normally, for, if it's a presentation, we try and schedule a work session if we need that at a later date to consider it. Mostly presentations are people giving us information, rather than looking for particular information from us in the presentation. But this one's going to be a little different in that I understand that the Board of Elections is looking for some input on some things that they're going to be presenting. And so I just wanted to point out that unlike other times, like the next few weeks when we have presentations, they would prefer our engagement on some questions at the end. So I see Marilyn Abbott, who is, looks like maybe is going to make the presentation. Welcome.
Hi, well, thank you. I'm not sure if this is ready.
Maybe you want to tell us who's here from the Board of Elections?
Okay. Well, first of all, I'm Marilyn Abbott. I'm the current chairman of the Board of Elections. Accompanying me is...
You might want to move a little closer to the...
I'm sorry, I didn't realize it's a microphone here. Accompanying me from the board is Jim Roberts, is behind me, Bill Lawson in the orange shirt, April Kissel, Jeffrey Nussbaum, no, I probably did that wrong, and Jose Zambrana. I believe we only have one member who's not here at the moment, and then we work closely with Jesse.
Great, thanks.
I don't know how to work this. Oh, okay. Well, I've already said, my name's Marilyn Abbott. I live in Ward One, just for the information, and I'm current chairman of the Board of Elections. And as you stated, the purpose tonight is to update you on certain actions of the board. And Slide Two shows that the city charter, the board reviewed its procedures from the 2011 election, and found that the dual requirements or the dual actions in that election of the instant runoff voting and the voter verification did cause some delays and did cause some confusion, and was administratively difficult to handle. In that election, we found that less than 7% of the voters who did vote, did verify their votes afterwards using the electronic method. We're making the recommendation that the council not require the voter verification as one of the requirements for this coming election. Our goal in this is to simplify the voter experience and to be able to concentrate on other aspects of the election process that need to be addressed, and possibly to be able to, if we need to have the time to prepare and administer ramifications from the other proposals that are being discussed, to accomplish this new way of handling the elections. We propose going out for an open proposal, for an open RFP, to see if there is a way to have a vendor come in and help us with the election services and equipment for the 2013 election. On the next three slides, the requirements and the desirable options that we want to include or propose including in the RFP are listed. We ask first that the system meet all the requirements of the city charter and code, and be voter-friendly. In addition, we're asking that the system provide a verifiable paper trail, provide for early absentee and provisional voting, provide for multilingual ballots, allow the ranking of candidates and write-in candidates. We have also specified and included requirements for calculating results, providing those results in a timely manner, and capturing ballot information in a format that can be analyzed that includes a record of each ballot. The successful vendor must provide onsite technical support to us, and be able to implement the voting system and provide equipment for the November 5, 2013 election. Three options that we consider desirable, and will have stated in the RFP, are the accommodation of absentee voting for military and other overseas voters, inclusion of assistive voting technology, and voter error notification before the ballot is cast. The last slide shows our schedule. This schedule with proposals due March 15th will give us timely cost information for input into the city's budget process. We've already reviewed and are circulating amongst ourselves a first draft of the RFP. We plan to meet tomorrow evening to work further on it, and hope to have a final RFP ready to, for internal review, either by the next couple of days, the end of the week, or at the latest, I guess, by the end of the weekend. Basically, this concludes my presentation, and I'm here to, you know, interested in your comments or questions, and if there's something I can't answer, possibly other members of the board can. I will add, separate from this, the board has done a lot of research in what is available out there, and is, is comfortable with the request to go out for proposals to assist us.
So is there anything in particular that you want input from us on?
The, the last two elections, we used the technology, the scan integrity, and that included the electronic verification of your vote. That, in doing the research, that seems to limit what our options would be if we go out for vendors. And we want the council to know that we're proposing that that not be made a requirement of this RFP.
But with the proposed RFP, there are methods where the vote is verified in a general sense?
The verification, as far as an audit, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just thinking about the, the various issues that people have had about, well, gee, if there's not a paper ballot, if it's all just, it goes, you know, kind of electronic, and something happens, then how can anybody verify anything?
We are asking for a verifiable paper ballot. I believe the problem is the technology of, say, in the electronic verification. What I'm talking about is that process where the, the voters were asked to write down their ballot number, write down the codes, and then go online and be able to see that their ballot was counted.
Right. So in eliminating that, it's not eliminating the verification of the ballot?
That's correct.
Okay, good, thanks. Councilmember Schultz?
One, thank you for your, your report, your presentation. When you speak about vendor services and RFP, can you kind of explain to me what, what you would be, I mean, I understand the cri, you've shown us what the criteria are of what you would want to have this vendor achieve, but what services would this vendor actually, what kind of services would the vendor actually provide?
They would provide the hardware. The city does not have its own voting machines. They would provide software support for, if it is some kind of electronic voting system, the software support for that. The onsite techni...
Ballot design.
The ballot design would be one of the issues, one of the things that they would provide. It would be very similar to what we've had support us in the past, where it is a contractor who has staff who comes in and helps us with the administrative, the administrative part of having the election. One of the options that we talked about, and we'll probably discuss, would be a tie-in between our vote, our possible expansion of votes, but of the, of the poll book. We currently rent the poll book from the county. One possibility would be the county information coming to Tacoma Park, us being able to update it with our information for our unique voters. We've looked at vendors also that could print a ballot on demand, as opposed to where we currently now print up ballots in advance and have to have methods to track all those ballots and account for all of them at the end of a, an election. So a whole range of different services that come in. And, oh, and, and the tabulation in an electronic system, doing the initial tabulations of the vote to give us a quick response of how the election went, election night, we hope.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned that there, you guys have done this exhaustive research of vendors out in the market.
Well, and it's exhausted, but we've done some.
Okay. The vendors out there, can they provide the services that you guys want? Is it an off-the-shelf product, or do you have to have a proprietary system built?
What I've looked at, and anybody can correct me if they'd like to, or add to it, is, is off-the-shelf. There's a lot of voting software that's available that supports like voting and trade, trade associations for stock companies. And there's a, there's a wide universe out there. And initially, I was surprised. I thought the instant runoff voting was going to be a major issue of not finding a off-the-shelf software. And it seems that instant runoff voting is pretty common in other environments.
Okay, thank you.
Did the city manager have, clerk have something that you wanted to point out?
I just wanted to say that I think one of the things we're thinking about is, there are a range of services that could be provided, and, and the board is hoping to pick and choose among them. It's not necessarily looking for an election in a box, you know, there's somebody's going to come and do our election. There's a whole gamut of, whether it's simply a, you know, the scanning that takes place on Election Day, or is it somewhat before that? Is it ballot design? Is it, there are a number of, of things that might be provided. So we, the thought is to leave it a little bit open, see what's out there, see what, see what ideas come in.
And the timing would be such that there would be enough time to be ready for the election and have the information for inclusion in the budget?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Mail, or no, Daniel Scoll?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Marilyn Abbott, and all of the committee for all the work you've done. I, I saw you all sweating it out on, during the summer. I guess, I think it was July 17th. I was glad I wasn't one of you. You did a great job on that. And this, this also, I'm going yippity-yip for, for not requiring the voter verification. Hugely confusing to me. I mean, I would just, I'd like to have a little paper ballot, make an X, and just fold it up and put it in a little cardboard box. But I know, in this day and age of computers and programs, and, and wanting to make sure it's correct, we ain't going to see that ever again. But the voter verification, I think, was, it was, how do I say this, intimidating. Maybe it wasn't just me, but it, with a 6% overall people actually doing the verification, it looks like it really was superfluous. It wasn't really necessary. I also, will you all be able to, to accommodate the possibility of same-day voting, or is that something that's not necessarily being proposed for this upcoming election, but for ones in the future, maybe?
Same-day registration.
Same-day registration. I mean, it's, it's, and voting, right? You can register and vote on the same day. Yes? Yes? Hello?
Yes. We have talked about that. We'd met with, we'd seen the early proposals from councilmembers Grimes and Mail, and had discussed them with them. And we're, we're pretty comfortable, yes, we can do it.
It can be done. And I know I had one more thought, but I'll think of it, and if I, if I, if it's pertinent, I'll punch my little button again and talk.
You'll remember it at 3:00 AM?
I'll probably remember it at 3:00 AM, right. Thank you. Again, seriously, thank you all. This is, it's no easy job to do what you do, and be under the gun, and, and I shouldn't use that word, under the wire, or whatever it is, that pressure, it's called pressure. I know it's a short, very short voter caucus to, you know, nominating caucus to, to the day of election. So I really appreciate that all of you all stepped, stepped forward. Thank you. Thank you. Because we couldn't, we couldn't be up here if you all weren't doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you and the entire board for coming here and putting the energy into this. I really appreciate that you're, you don't view your task as just operational, Election Day task, but that you look for innovative ways to improve things through the years. And I know that takes extra energy and extra thought. I just, two questions. One is, what do you consider to be really the top improvements that you're looking for, the key things that you're trying to, to improve with these, with going out, back out to the marketplace?
I would say the voter experience, and to have a straightforward experience for them, and to have a, an integrated process, an overall integrated process. There were, there were some, well, one of my personal ones on the last time was, we had to worry about having special pencils, and it would be nice to have a package where everything was included, and maybe possibly have something that's more the experience that the voters have with other elections.
Okay. I think that's a lot of goals. And the other question then was, and it kind of keys off of what Councilmember Smith was asking, is, would you be, is it possible then that we would end up with more than one vendor for different parts of this?
To be honest with you, I hadn't anticipated that, and I would almost hope no, but I, well, I'll throw that to Jesse.
Let's see what comes in. I doubt that. We're, we're looking for a simplified process, not a more complicated process. So I'm thinking that we wouldn't...
Great. Then I certainly can support it. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
I want to really ask a very simple question, which may seem innocent, but really isn't. I recall voting, when voting here in the 1980s, and I guess early 90s, when we literally had paper ballots. And we went behind a little thing for our ward and checked it out and put it in a box, not unlike what they probably did 200 years ago. So my, my question is, is that why, why aren't, given the size of our election, the number of, the few votes that actually get cast, what is wrong with a paper ballot system? I mean, I'm, it's, I don't know the answer to that question.
Can I give you a two-part answer?
Please.
One part, the first part of the answer is, there's nothing wrong with it. The second part of it is that the instant runoff voting does complicate, or make more complicated, doing hand counting. So if you do get into a situation where you have a contested election, it would probably delay the results some.
Some, okay. Because in, in looking through the, the criteria that you, you just enumerated for the benefit of everyone, it does seem like paper ballots would suffice for us. it does seem like paper ballots would suffice for us, most of the criteria on your page. I'm not necessarily saying this is what we should do, and I do really laud the intent of simplifying, which, you know, that's one of your goals, and I appreciate that.
Well, a third part of the answer also is, we did put in requirements about calculating results and capturing information, and one of the other things an automated system will do more easily is give you information you can then drill down into and maybe start looking at, you know, look more closely or have a better way of handling voting trends and maybe slicing and dicing the data in different ways.
Okay, thank you very much.
If the clerk can remind us, I think we had one election when the community center was being expanded and we were kind of into it, but not really into it, and we had an election with a paper ballot with instant runoff voting where people voted over in the, what's now the computer center.
Not with instant runoff voting. That was the year where the instant runoff was on the, was a referendum on the ballot. But it was paper ballots, was a handicap, 2,500 voters, went really well, I'd say.
And was there a sense that it took longer to do that than other systems we've been using? Or is it just that, or is it that there's the potential to go longer if they're, with instant runoff, if they're going, getting down through the details of that?
There's the potential, but paper ballot is always, a paper ballot and hand count is, it's out there as an option. It just is, and maybe the board's going to end up there, but I don't think that's where they're headed.
Councilmember Grimes, did you change your mind? Councilmember Daniels Cohen, you remembered what the other one was?
I did. I remembered.
Gold stars.
Huh? No, I'm waiting for Marilyn.
Well, Jim has a comment. Jim has a comment he'd like to make.
I yield my, part of my three minutes to Jim.
Actually, I have a comment I'd like her to make, but the fact is that if we do what we say we're going to do, that from a voter's experience point of view, they have a paper ballot. They take a paper ballot, they mark the ballot, they don't know what happens to it afterwards. What happens to it afterwards is we have a much sort of cleaner, easier, straightforward way to do the counting. But from the voter's point of view, they go, they do exactly what you were saying. They take the paper ballot, they go behind a little curtain, they mark it, they turn it in. And then the issue is, what do we do with that? Well, if we scan it and then use the computer to do the counting, it makes it a cleaner, more straightforward process.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
I actually thought it was pretty fun last summer. I think your scanning and counting method was human beings, wasn't it, when, during the, yeah. I sat out there, it was your little human beings, counting them one at a time. So, it wasn't that bad. It was pretty intense and cool, but that wasn't what I remembered. I thought it was pretty intense and cool. You all probably didn't. I know what we did last, I think it was last summer, time flies when you're having fun and getting older, during one part of, one summer, when you brought in the new vendor, I think Scan Integrity, I think that's how you say the name, we had a practice session where, and it was the last summer or the summer before, it was last summer before this election.
I believe that was two summers ago.
Ah, okay, see, I told you time flies. But when you bring in the vendor, is there enough time to, maybe in the summertime, have a practice and also include the teenagers? I think, I think we included, you included teens up to 15 or 16 years old to come and at least practice on the machines. Didn't you or am I a crazy person? Don't answer that. Just, don't answer the crazy person part.
We had a mock election.
Yeah, the mock election, right.
Yeah, I think it would depend, I think it would depend on, if there's, if we're looking at, if we're looking at something that's really unusual, that may require a mock or something that, to test it out then, but it probably won't be necessary.
Okay, because the Scan Integrity thing, I came and participated in that too, and I was screaming about it then and then went and voted with it and continued to scream, so it wasn't a loud scream, but it, you know, it was really confusing for me. It was, it was pretty highly technical, and I'm not, so, like I say, the little piece of paper and the pencil and making the little X, it's my way to go. Thank you.
It sounds good.
Any other questions? Anything additional you need from us on this?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, so it sounds like go forward with your timeline.
Yeah, thank you all much.
Go forward to prosper.
Thank you all, and I assume you're staying for our next discussion.
Yes.
Good.
We do have—
Next, we have a work session discussion of some proposals, including right-to-vote resolution and same-day voter registration. And who's going to lead this one?
Go ahead. I can go first. In this discussion we've already had tonight is a great introduction to this topic. You know, what we have in the agenda packet is something that comes in two parts. It's a proposal that would really talk about some general sort of principles of voting and what we want to encourage in the city and also at national and state levels in terms of promoting participation in elections and a right to vote. And then it's focused on specific changes that we could make within our existing policies. So, I'll let councilmember, am I on the right track?
Is that what I made?
Yeah. Would you like—
Who's going to do the first one?
You want just to—
Just jump in.
You can explain yours, I'll explain mine.
Is that what you mean by do the first one, Bruce?
Sure. Because we got, we got two pieces in here, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, if you're going first, do yours.
So—
Yours doesn't start till—
All right, if you're doing yours, do yours first.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll go ahead, you can orient yourself. Right, so I'll say that the thought about Election Day voter registration grew out of discussions over 2012 with community members regarding inclusion, how to get people into Tacoma Park, more involved in the, not only city affairs, running for office, but also at the neighborhood level. And actually, one of the things that spurred some of these discussions was Fair Vote's initiative to try to interest Tacoma Park in choice voting, which is not the same as instant runoff. Instead, there would be fewer wards and there would be, I'm sorry, there would be fewer wards, yes, and there would be at-large seats where there'd be multiple at-large representatives, but each person would get a single vote and so on. In any case, that broadened out into a more general discussion of inclusion. And inclusion, part of that is, how do we get more people to run for office and how do we get more people involved electorally, in other words, to come out and vote? We, as was observed earlier tonight, have often dismal turnout. So, a number of ideas been battered around, and one of them is Election Day voter registration or so-called same-day voter registration. And it turns out that that's kind of a hot idea here in Maryland this year. The governor has initiated legislation that is now before the House and the Senate, the state House and Senate, that is, of course, to extend same-day voter registration into the early voting period. And then Delegate Kuroresnik from District 39 has once again introduced a bill that would change the Maryland constitution to allow the creation of Election Day voter registration. So, there are two things there. Same-day voting for the early voting period, and then there's same-day voting, Election Day voter registration for Election Day. Those are separate initiatives. But Maryland law, in this case, I am fairly sure would not apply to municipalities like us, and it's uncertain that these things will pass anyway. So, the idea is to get more people out to vote, noting that there's only a five-week period between the nominating caucus in Tacoma Park and the elections. People don't necessarily pay much attention to Tacoma Park elections until the comparative last minute, that being four weeks of last minute, since right now you have to register four weeks before the election. Well, Election Day voter registration would enable us to register people who have recently moved to the city, younger people, including individuals the age 17, to vote in city elections. It sounds like a good idea. It's not the only thing we should pursue, as was remarked earlier. There are many elements that can contribute to increasing turnout. This is an enabling element. We definitely need to do a better job of engagement of potential voters in the city. One way to do that, I mentioned recently when we were talking about landlord-tenant code, would be perhaps to have a requirement that landlords distribute voting registration packets and electoral information provided by the city to new tenants, people who have newly signed leases. That's not for discussion today. So, I learned through the city clerk, Jesse Carpenter, that the city of Rockville actually has same-day voting. You register and vote on Election Day, and so we would not be breaking ground here. Maybe we wouldn't do exactly what they're doing. And as I mentioned, there are a variety of state initiatives. And then in the packet that you have today, there is material from the Maryland NAACP, Maryland League of Women Voters endorsing same-day voting at the state level. The Tacoma Park effort has specifically gotten the endorsement of the ACLU of Maryland and the Montgomery County Chapter of Progressive Maryland and of Fair Vote, thank you, Executive Director Ritchie. And the last thing I'll mention is that these state bills are cross-fired in the Senate by District 20 Senator Jamie Raskin, and he has also personally endorsed same-day voting, Election Day voter registration in Tacoma Park. And I'll happily jump into the second one.
Yes.
Which is a broader, this is called the right-to-vote resolution, within our packet, within your packet. And as I was saying, that one part of this is really about a general set of principles. How do we get more people to participate in our elections? And the other is about specific things that would, I hope, if colleagues in council in the community are supportive, turn into things that we would need to draft, that could be parts of either charter or code changes. So, this same document talks about same-day voter registration. It talks about the issue of allowing young citizens to vote, so 16 and 17-year-olds. Again, following councilmember Grimes, our state senator Jamie Raskin was one of the leaders and I believe introduced legislation that now allows the state to collect voter registration forms for 16 and 17-year-olds and that allows 17-year-olds to vote in primaries if they're going to be 18 at the time of a general election. I believe that he is excited about the idea of Tacoma Park becoming a community that would allow 16 and 17-year-olds to vote. And working with his staff today, we followed up with the State Election Commission, the director of the State Election Commission, and confirmed that on a practical matter, what Tacoma Park could do is just, is ask for those lists of 16 and 17-year-olds who have registered and have those be part of the packet of information that we're able to get when we get the rest of our voter rolls. So, that's one option. I would add to it that in, I believe in all of Maryland, certainly in Montgomery County, 10th graders take a class called Federal, State, and Local Government. And so, either the year after they take that class, or in some cases, the year that they're taking that class, they would be able to vote for the first time if we had this provision established here. In fact, some of those 10th graders might be more informed about voting systems and the roles of state, federal, and local governments than residents whose understanding of that might be, might be more distant. This packet talks about creating some specific charges for the Board of Elections, which are fairly consistent with what they're doing now, evaluating, you know, current practice and figuring out how we can do better. It also, and this comes about through the discussions that Marilyn Abbott referred to, it creates or proposes creating a separate task force of election or voting experts and interested residents. They would specifically look at other ways that we could strengthen our system, other ways we could encourage participation from parts of the community that don't currently have high participation rates. So, for example, access to apartment buildings, multilingual signage, ideas like having multiple voting locations for municipal elections. Some of these things have cost, some don't, but the idea would be to create a task force that would have a set mandate and a short duration of time in which to flesh something out for us and make some recommendations back to us. And the last piece is really looking, again, at a state and national level, would be to try to encourage other places to adopt the practices we're adopting and try to encourage other places to do, to continue to get better. It's not that we're not doing a good job, it's not that we haven't worked really hard on these issues, it's that one can always get better. There are always changes that we can make, either because technology changes or information changes. So, would be to try to encourage at the state and federal level for some of these same changes to be adopted. And I'd just end by noting that we have in front of us, and it would be part of the public record, we have a note of support from the Young Activist Club, from the idea of having voting rights established for 16 and 17-year-olds. And we also have a note from Mary Rucker indicating her support for the proposal. And she also sent me separate comments where she was encouraging us to do what we can to encourage at the statewide level, the passage of legislation that would allow instant runoff voting at the statewide level as well. So, thank you.
Councilmember Grimes, did you have something else?
Yeah, I'll just add that I'm supportive of the voting rights resolution. I would, I think, not right this moment, but suggest some revisions to it, but they'd be tinkering rather than anything major, and I'm glad you brought it forward. And I know that, once again, Fair Vote had something to do with this.
I know I've got a couple of questions that I wanted to bring up. I don't know what other people have. So, I'll run through mine real quick. There was something in here about, that the, I want to make sure that we understand that we can have same-day voter registration as long as we make it clear to people that they still need to register with the state in order to vote in state and federal elections. So, the process would be that we would, we would allow them to register here and vote, but that would not register them to vote, only in our election that day.
No, if we would, no, if they're eligible to vote in Maryland, we would, we've worked out all the details on this, but we would use a standard voter registration form for this, and then the form would just be sent—
So, it's not that they would have to do something else, it's that they would register here and it would be sent to the state for the rest of it?
Like they do now for other—
With the exception of non-citizen voters.
Right, okay, because that's why I got a little bit confused about, wait a minute, they have to do something else?
Actually, there's something advantageous in some of the bills that are being introduced this year. For instance, I mentioned that at Governor O'Malley's instigation, bills have been introduced just in the last few days for extension of, for creation of same-day voter registration during early voting. And they actually lay out the kind of ID that would be required and all that kind of stuff, and, you know, so much the better. If someone else at a higher governmental level than us is setting standards here, then we simply adopt them. And, you know, I can point people, for instance, to House Bill 224, which is the one that I'm referring to here. And, yeah, the idea would be to do as much as we can within the existing mechanisms. The registration forms that we collect would be forwarded to the county Board of Elections. For actual registration, we would have to have mechanisms, of course, to deal with any kind of fraudulent voting. But studies that fortunately other organizations, such as the League of Women Voters have done, suggest that the fraud rate in these kind of instances with same-day registration in the states that do have it is very, very low. That, I'll just remark that when political party, no, when a political party cries out about voter fraud, those are generally highly political claims that have very little basis in reality and experience.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear that what I was questioning was the, as it's written in here, pointing out that we would still, that we have to make it clear to people that they would still need to register with the state in order to vote in state and federal elections, which makes it sound like they would still need to do something else other than what they just did with us.
We would take their forms and—
And I hear what you're saying, but the way it's written, it says they would have to do something else.
Okay, you know, this is a proposal—
So, just, I just wanted to check that out. And I'm a little confused by the voting, 16, it's possible 16 and 17-year-old voting— voting, because it also sounds like if we got lists from the state about the people who had already registered through that process, that they would then, we would then be saying if we had same-day voter registration, it would be for potentially people, for people eighteen, but for the seventeen and sixteen-year-olds, they wouldn't necessarily be able to do same-day voter registration and vote?
You can file a state voter registration form if you're seventeen, certainly. You can vote in the general election in November on the even years. You can vote in the primary that year if you will be eighteen by the time of the general election. We would be extending it further. The primary in 2014 is going to be in May. We would extend back further another six months to say if you can vote in, I think it's November 5th of 2014 will be the general election. If you can vote, if you're eighteen, by November 5th, 2014, you can vote in Tacoma Park on, I'm not getting the day right, November 5th of 2013. You know, there are details to be worked out.
Yeah.
Can you participate in the nominating caucus five weeks before? Those are details. But the sixteen-year-olds, if someone registers for a, what do you call it, learner's permit to drive, you can designate in the form, correct? I see one person who might have gone through this recently. You can designate in the learner's permit form voter registration. Is that correct?
Well, actually, they ask you. I mean, that, when my son was there, they, you know, it took me by surprise because he was sixteen, and they asked, you know, would you like to register to vote now? Would you, you know, what party would you like to be? Ah, okay. So, you know, they were...
Take advantage of...
Right. So, sixteen-year-olds use the same form.
We want to take advantage of sixteen and seventeen-year-olds already registering through these systems that have been established at the state level. We'd want to take advantage of the ability for sixteen and seventeen-year-olds to sign up through whatever, you know, sort of later process that we've established. Again, using the same form, because that same form should be...
Okay, that's what I wanted the clarification on, whether there was something different that the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds did that would somehow preclude, that there would somehow be a difference with the same-day voter registration and us taking that. It sounds like there would not.
It shouldn't be. And I think that, and the reason I pointed it out specifically was because when we met with the board, they, we were wondering about the practicalities of how does the city get the rolls? And so, I had just followed up on that specific question, which was how do we actually get the list of sixteen and seventeen-year-olds who may be registered but might not currently come in our, in the file we request?
And then, I think maybe somebody, maybe Councilmember Grimes, mentioned something about non-citizen voting. So, we would need to work out details of, well, if we were going to do sixteen and seventeen for citizens, then if there was non-citizen voting, how early do we go? But that would be up to us.
Almost surely, we'd want to maintain parity there.
Right. And there was something in here about convicted felons not being able to vote, and it didn't sound like what I remember being the case, that there were many cases in which...
You're probably looking at the NAACP testimony. So, I asked the city clerk to include pages from the NAACP legislative agenda that were relevant to the discussions tonight, but there's also stuff in the NAACP material that is not relevant to what we're discussing tonight.
This was in the draft resolution.
Tim, is that yours then?
It said 5.3 million American citizens with felony convictions who have denied the right to vote. And I didn't, my recollection is that there were many convicted felons who then regained the right to vote.
That's right.
Okay, so this is just the ones who did not regain it? Okay.
Sorry, I didn't realize what you were referring to.
And just one observation that I had on the draft resolution is that there were a couple of places where, like at the top of the page on Section 1, the first bullet, where it says, "The council does hereby affirm that the right to vote is a fundamental citizenship right to be cherished, protected, and exercised." And I thought, hmm, and what about non-citizen voting? So, I thought there might, if we go forward with this, there would need to be some work on language dealing with citizenship, both there and at the top of the next page, where we might want to consider what words we use and how it would affect our non-citizen voting.
And to that point in general, to me, the specific wording of this is very draft and very skeletal.
And that's why I was just pointing out that that's an area that would need work.
Yeah, yep.
Councilmember Schultz?
I think it's, the idea of same-day registration is a good idea, as well as early voting, and the goal of trying to stimulate voting and participation in the whole election process. And so, our town can be a laboratory, if you will, to try to see what works. I'm skeptical about having sixteen-year-olds vote. I like the idea that's before the state legislature of allowing people who will be eighteen by the age of the general election to be able to participate in the primary. That seems to be a pretty sensible thing, but I guess I'm a little skeptical about having sixteen and seventeen-year-olds vote, because first of all, you need to be able to establish their residence, and a lot of sixteen and seventeen-year-olds don't have driver's licenses or even learner's permits. So, you'd have to figure out a way that they can prove their residency and their age, which I guess would require a birth certificate, lacking anything else, because they don't have a way of approving residency. I mean, they can bring their parents along, and their parents can say, yeah, this is my kid, this is where we live, I suppose. So, I think there's some details there to work out. I understand the goal of trying to stimulate participation and all that, and I guess I'm a little doubtful that you're going to get any more than a very, very small number of kids actually wanting to vote at the age of sixteen or seventeen. But I suppose it's harmless. And the, I'm just thinking more about the, you know, the legal process. The other thing, the charter, city charter requires residency in the city of Tacoma Park for thirty days prior to, in order to be eligible to vote. And I think thirty days is the minimum. I don't think we want to encourage people to sort of move here on Tuesday or on Sunday and vote on Tuesday, because I don't think there's any possible way legally established that somebody can prove residency in so short a time. But thirty days allows somebody to probably be able to produce some documentation, a paper that proves that they've been living in the city on a thirty, for that they actually have a residence in the city. Might be a copy of a lease. Could be a new driver's license, because you usually get one in that period of time, or a bill from a utility, or something of that nature. So, those are just some things that I think would need to be, would need to be looked at. But generally speaking, I think it's, same-day registration is a good idea for, I mean, when I've been out running my, you know, knocking on doors, one of the first questions I ask is that if people are a little confused as to why I'm knocking on their door, the question comes up, well, are you registered? And they don't know. Or they say, well, I think I am. Or maybe I'll hear, well, I'm not registered. And then a question comes up, well, gee, if you're not registered, then I guess I'm wasting my time and your time, and let's try to remember to vote, to register before the next election. And it would be really nice to be able to say, hey, here is my briefcase, here's what you need to do, you can still do this anytime between now and Election Day, including Election Day. And that would be, I think, because when you're interacting with the voter on their doorstep, that's a time when they're liable to get excited, hopefully, you know, to get excited about voting and not sort of thinking, oh my God, who's this guy? And so, that'd be a great idea, to be able to do that. Just some thoughts. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen?
Thank you, Mayor. Wow. When I ran for the office here, one of my goals was to get more people out to vote, and I was sure I could do that. I was sure that could happen. It ain't so easy. I found that out. We got the same, basically the same number in Ward 3, at any rate, to vote with three candidates running as had voted in past elections. So, I had all kinds of thoughts and ideas. We had, let's see, we had, the whole running council had booth space at the Street Festival. I had meetings at the co-op. I wore sandwich boards at every event prior to the, I think to the mayor's chagrin sometimes. I went door to...
It was only at 11 o'clock at night as you headed in the door and still had a sandwich board on, and I began to wonder.
Right. Right. You know, I went door to door, as we all did, knocked on doors, handed out literature, chatted with people, wanted to, you know, encourage them to register to vote. I stood at the dog park at Spring Park and talked to people with their dogs in the unfenced kind of pseudo-dog park that people were using. I stood by the metro. Anybody going to the metro? I handed out literature to them. I thought I could get people to vote, more people to vote. Eh, wrong answer, didn't happen. This seems to be a real positive way to make it happen. I'm a little skeptical about sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, because that's going to mean I'm going to have to learn about tweeting and Facebooking and, you know, all the social media, which I am not, they're not tools in my little toolbox right now, this very day. But I think it's a way to get people to learn how to vote at even a younger age. I can remember when I first turned 21, that was the most exciting thing, was to go in and actually cast my ballot. And I have voted in Tacoma Park elections when there was a pencil and a piece of paper. You scratched out the name, you scratched out the name, folded the piece of paper, and stuck it in a cardboard box, and somebody hand counted it. It's a long, long time ago. So, I'm pretty thrilled about this. A little skeptical about sixteen and seventeen-year-olds only because of a technology I'm going to have to learn. I can do that. Voter registration on the day of election, terrifically exciting, because as soon as you walk up to somebody's door, knock on the door after you've climbed forty-eight steps, you're dying, and you knock on the door, how are you, Mr. Smith and Mrs. Smith? Are you registered to vote? No. You go, nah. Okay, and you got to be a kind person and keep chatting, and it's after October the 17th. There's no way they're going to be able to vote for you. Still, it's polite to be kind. So, I think all of this, with some work on the language, I know it's a draft of a draft of a draft, is real positive for the city. And one more time, Tacoma Park can be a groundbreaker. I think this is exciting for the city to be out there and more progressive, wally, more progressive than the rest of the state and the county, just to get us, get our names out there one more time. I really appreciate the Councilmember Grimes and Mayo bringing this up, and I'm looking forward to continued discussion. Thank you.
I want to get to Councilmember Siemens, and then I'll get back to Councilmembers Grimes and Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor. I, would you just like to follow on Councilmember Daniels Cohen's comments about campaigning? And, you know, I also had the fantastic goal of getting everybody in my ward to vote. And you go out there and knock on doors, and it wasn't just my first election, but I've spent a great many hours in organizing people to go out and register people to vote, and sitting in front of the stores and in apartment buildings, and getting many, many people registered to vote. But getting people registered to vote is a challenge. Getting people to actually go out and vote is, sometimes feels impossible. And so, I certainly support any initiative that I deem reasonable.
Can we pay them to vote?
And, you know, even paying them to vote if they vote the way we want might be an option, I don't know.
What if you should not vote?
But one thing, but one thing that was mentioned earlier is the difficulty in many of the apartment buildings, especially the larger apartment buildings. But many apartment buildings have secured doors, and many apartment buildings don't allow for the distribution of flyers within the buildings, or the distribution of flyers in the parking lots on the vehicles, or standing around in the parking lots to hand out campaign literature. You know, single-family homeowners have the luxury of being able to voice their support through lawn signs for particular candidates and particular causes. And the apartment dwellers are forbidden by the landowners who own the land that they live on from putting up signs on the lawns in front of their buildings, out where people can read them as they go down the road. And so, the best they can hope for is putting a sign in their window in support of their campaign, candidates or their causes. So, I would like, as we discuss this, to discuss that in more detail, of what this council can do maybe within the city to provide a little bit more power to the tenants to participate in the elections. You know, on one hand, we want them to participate, but on the other hand, they're being stifled from participation, so, thank you.
Okay, I want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to comment. First, I'll go to Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a chance to go over this proposal inside and out, and generally, the idea of same-day registration is good. But I don't see in the proposal how we can, as my colleague Councilmember Siemens has mentioned, how can we get the renters in the apartment buildings on Houston, on Maple Avenue? How can we get them more involved in the elections? I think that when we look at changing the landlord-tenant law, that we should put some resolutions in there that require landlords to give new tenants that are signing a lease, renewing a lease, a voter registration card, that we, as candidates, are allowed some way to access the buildings, handing out campaign literature. I think those ideas would possibly, and there's no guarantee here, possibly increase voter participation. But I don't think, as the proposal stands here, that we would get any new voters in the next election.
Councilmember Mayo?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I want to address a few things. Councilmember Schultz identified some of the difficulties for sixteen and seventeen-year-olds. But actually, sixteen and seventeen-year-olds already have to prove their residency because they take advantage of one of the most expensive services in the county, our school system. And so, they have to be able to prove where they live to be able to go to our schools. And surely, if they have a way to get into that system, we should be able to accept that. The issue of being able to prove age is, you know, is a challenge, because they don't have a driver's license, they may not have a passport. But many of our adult residents also don't have driver's licenses, particularly lower-income residents. And so, things like birth certificates become, you know, sort of one of the options that we would have to rely on. And you're right, that there may be people who don't have those birth certificates, and so, they, you know, ID does become limiting. But surely, there are many that do, and there are many that could then register. In terms of sort of whether we're being groundbreaking, I did, I looked online a little bit, and actually, countries like Scotland are allowing sixteen-year-olds to vote in federal elections. Cuba... Cuba, Uruguay, Argentina. There's this whole wave of efforts now across the world to let 16- and 17-year-olds vote, and in many places, they do that. And that's at a, that's at a federal level, that's at a national level. At state and more local levels, there's, you know, you sort of, you quickly run out of, of inability to continue to Google and look at pages of how that varies. So it is happening. And in terms of, you know, we never know how many people, to Councilmember Smith's point, how many people would actually use, take advantage of a new right or a privilege. But when I think back on the Tacoma Park Fourth of July parades, and all of the state candidates, county candidates or incumbents, who walk in those parades, and you look at the faces of their volunteers, and their volunteers are majoritely, mostly 16- and 17-year-olds, and maybe 18-year-olds. And there are these kids who are volunteering for these campaigns and giving out signs and giving out T-shirts and manning phone banks, and surely know more about those candidates than, than six out of 10 voters. And they can't vote. And those kids would vote. And that might be important enough to do it. So, you know, I think of that group, even if it's, again, 10 voters or 20 voters, that that would be something really good to do. And the other thing that, the other part that moves me on this is that, you know, I did encounter during the campaign, definitely the people who I would have loved to have been able to hand a registration form and say, just bring this with you when you go to the polls. But also teenagers who are on their way to college and, you know, had never voted, and they're going to go off, and they aren't registered to vote, and they're going to spend four years, maybe still not voting. And if we had the opportunity to capture them at a younger age and get them into the system and get them voting maybe once in a municipal election, or at least on a roll, that, you know, maybe you get them to vote, maybe you start a voting habit that much earlier. And I think those things are worthwhile. To the, to Councilmembers Smith and Siemens' point about the apartment buildings, I absolutely agree. And an additional idea is that because we give the, oh, no, I'm forgetting the name of it, the property tax abatement opportunities, that we're, because we're giving city money to some of these buildings, perhaps, at least for the term of those, those abatement periods, perhaps with some of those grants in essence that we're giving to these buildings, there could be a condition of allowing candidate access. And, you know, there's details to be worked out there that I would assume we would want to, want to flesh out. But that's, that's yet another route in addition to the one that Councilmember Smith mentioned. But I share, I believe that's a, that's a high priority, and, you know, some of these things are only going to make a very, very small impact on, on, on numbers that we need to do more for. Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. So two things about apartment buildings. I very much appreciate what Councilmembers Smith and Siemens are saying there, and we are working on rewriting landlord-tenant code. So now's an ideal time to look into what we can do legally to afford access to, not just candidates, but more generally, political organizers, campaigns, whatever, to apartment buildings. And I will quite happily do research work with my colleagues, the city attorney, whatever, to try to see what we can legally do. And I'll also add that I'm intrigued by the idea that I've become aware of only recently, of automatic voter registration. The idea that when someone touches the government in some way that involves providing personal information, that that person can be automatically registered to vote. Most of the touchpoints, it seems to me, that would afford, that would involve giving that personal information to government are ones that happen at the county and state level rather than at the city level. I'm talking about stuff like school enrollments, that's county function. Property taxes are administered by the county, although we do have our own property tax rolls. Not everyone lives here, however, who owns property here, but people who get homestead exemptions, no, I'm sorry, it's not homestead, it's not exemptions, it's allowances, you know, those are people who live here. When people do tax filings, we know where they live. And I will work at a, you know, as I have time, on interacting with county and state agencies that are perhaps, I mean, I should say county and state authorities who could perhaps move us toward automatic registration. You know, it's, they're all, they're all ideas that contribute to the greater goal of getting more people voting. So I guess what I'm looking for now is a green light from the council when we get to that point, which shouldn't be too much longer, to go ahead and turn the draft voting rights resolution into one that could be voted on by council to get a green light, to work with colleagues on modifications to the landlord-tenant code that would add voting provisions in there, and then proposed revisions to the city charter that would create election day voter registration. I mean, it sounds, sounds like people are generally favorable, which is great.
Yep.
Councilmember Schultz.
It's not just apartment buildings, it's also condominium buildings. I know that in the last election, as the Tacoma overlook was filling up with apart, new unit owners, I went over the, into that building, was able to get in through the buzzer door without any difficulty, and went upstairs and through the floors, figuring I would take my campaign flyer and just walk down the halls and slip them under doors, and could do that pretty rapidly within a few hours, until I absolutely ran, went, happened to walk past the sales office, and this guy wants to know what I'm doing and starts reprimanding me. So I apologized, pretended to leave the building, and hid in a stairwell for a while, and then stuck my head back out, and when it seemed all clear, I continued on my way.
Excuse me, can I ask, did you have your ponytail on when you did that?
I should have probably had my ponytail.
You said Terry Siemens on it.
Yeah. And, you know, it's a, it's a funny story, but I got through it, but it was, it was, basically, I was told what I was supposed to do was just to pile up my flyers and put them on a table in the lobby, which I ended up having to do in the sister building, the New Hampshire Towers, which is a rental building. But it is a travesty that renters, and this, I mean, I've got plenty of them, in the Hillwood Manor Apartments, which are garden apartments, and you, some of the doors are open and you can go in, and other doors are locked. And this isn't for me to knock on the doors, it's just simply to be able to put flyers, Scotch-tape it to the wall, or put it under doors. It's a pretty innocent process. I wonder if one solution might not be, in addition to those we've already talked about, would be that when people get nominated, then they get a, get recognized as an official candidate for the Tacoma Park general election, and that as an official candidate, that each, each candidate then has the authority through maybe the landlord-tenant legislation to have, to be, to be able to ask for and have access to those buildings by going through proper channels with the, with the management of the leasing office or whatever it is, something of that nature. Because I think it's just, as I said, it's, I mean, if we can do anything to enhance voting, I think that of all the things we've talked about, this would probably be my, the thing I think is, in addition to same-day registration, the thing that would be the most, make the most difference in getting turnouts.
I want to make one more quick point and then ask a question. It struck me as we were talking that it may be that one aspect of the allowing 16- and 17-year-olds to vote is, depending on the, the process by which they get registered, we may in fact drive up the number of voters in the election, but we may in fact see no change in the percentage of voters voting because of the large number, the large universe that we would be adding. And then a question about the language in the draft resolution about having a task force. The question that it brought to mind for me was, well, gee, we already kind of have a task force. It's called the Board of Elections. And I wondered what the Board of Elections would feel about getting into some of these types of issues. And since you all are here, maybe if I can ask you if you have any opinion about your sense of whether the Board of Elections would want to be involved in something like this, whether you would want to be involved depending on the, the time, not, not the amount of time involved, but the time on the calendar, whether there are any issues with, well, gee, if you're going to be doing this other work that you talked about to us in the presentation, if that might preclude having extra work, whether if the timing was better, you might be willing to do something.
Two issues there. And I have to say, first of all, that we did discuss this at some length with both Mr. Grimes and Mr. Mayo. The first issue is exactly the one you raised, that is, if we're trying to do this within this coming year, we have a fairly heavy schedule, especially if we're in the process of reviewing new, possible new vendor. So that was one concern. But a more sort of general concern was, many of the issues that are mentioned in this proposed proposal is, they deal with legal issues. They deal with questions about what can and can't be done, and what kinds of laws need to be addressed specifically, you know, what kind of, what does a city want to respond to in terms of state laws and federal laws, and how we might want to have a response for that. And to be perfectly honest, I don't think that the council felt in this, you should let me know if I'm characterizing this correctly, that we had the expertise to do that, that there is a certain element of, of a need to have a broader expertise, especially in legal areas, to be able to address some of these issues. I don't think the council either, I'm sorry, I don't think the Board of Election either desires nor expects to be out of this process. I just don't see us taking on the role that is being, and I shouldn't say I, I said we, because we've had this discussion, that we take on the roles that are being explicitly discussed in that proposal.
And it sounds like, from what you're saying, that your sense is that there could be a good bit of it that would necessity be somebody like the city attorney who would be looking at some of the legal aspects.
Or you may want to have attorneys appointed to the, to the, to the task force to give some advice as well.
Okay. Thanks, that's helpful. I figured, I figured it wasn't as simple as it appeared to be when I thought of it. So it sounds like the council is generally in favor of moving forward with some of these proposals. Next steps would be to have some additional work done on coming up with some revisions to drafts, is, do we need to, I don't, my sense is that in general, we're in favor, and that some of it may require some additional work to kind of iron out some of the details as to whether we feel like there are things that we, you know, that kind of, it's all set. I don't, I don't feel like we're ready to just move forward with, okay, a draft will be coming back in X number of weeks. But it sounds like with some additional work, that something could, could come forward. And the clerk has a comment.
If the council wanted to move forward with the same-day registration idea, it would require a charter amendment. And I'd encourage you to, if you feel like that's something you want to do in principle this, for this upcoming election, which is less than a year away—
Yes.
—I'd encourage you to, to make that decision soon. Because, because obviously, the amendment has to be drafted. It takes 90 days—
Right, right.
—from start to finish for it to become final. So if you, if you wanted to segregate that piece of it out, and also if the younger voters is another, as a part of that, it would also need to be addressed in the charter. And I don't know if you want to do everything at once, you know, do you want to—
I would support those two in the near term.
So, so I guess what I'm saying is—
So it sounds like it would be helpful if we had a sense of wanting to go forward with potential charter amendments, that it would be good to know sooner rather than later. There was something in here about, oh, gee, put it in the February newsletter. My sense is that's already basically finished.
Right. It's, that's too soon.
Right.
But, but if, if there's a consensus or a majority of the council supports moving ahead with those two things for this upcoming election, then give that direction to, to staff and the council members who are, you know, working on it.
Okay.
But to start doing serious drafting and having the city attorney look at things and preparing for that charter amendment process.
So are people ready to kind of do a straw vote on same-day voter registration and 16- and 17-year-old pieces? We'll do those separately, just to make sure? In favor of moving forward with drafting on same-day voter registration and 16- and 17-year-old voting? Okay. So we've got direction to go forward with drafting on both of those.
Yeah. Just ask, are there any, were there any hints of any other ideas in the proposals that could potentially touch on a charter issue?
I'm not sure about that, but, but I, my, how do I say this? I'd encourage you to be cautious about trying to do too many things at once. And, because the board is, you know, we're talking about some slightly significant changes to how the board does things in the, for this, and the election's less than a year away. If you try to pile other things on top of that, I think it may be too much.
We could have the attorney look through—
Right. To see if the, if the charter needs, if other things—
Yeah, we could have the city attorney look through and see, you know, what else might trigger a charter change, so, and get that information to you.
I think that would be helpful, and at least just speaking briefly, on that issue of, you know, piling on too much at once, I would just want to make, if there was a chance to, if there was a need to make a tweak that wouldn't require us to do something right away, but would take away a barrier to doing it at some point in the future, as in particular would be other charter amendments.
Sounds like you had some experience with potential charter amendments.
One of the things that I think we, we want to think about in this regard is that we, since this is something that's on the governor's agenda for the legislature, we don't know what that's going to look like, and how the legislature's going to react to it, whether it'll get passed or not. No harm in going ahead with what we're talking about, I guess, but, but then we need to keep in mind that the state's actions may usurp or preclude us from that, to doing certain things. Since we don't know what the legislature's going to do.
Right. But it sounds like we're, we're moving in a timeframe that would allow us to see what might come from that.
Yes. I agree we're in the timeframe, but we just need to pay attention to that.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yeah. So a number of points, which I'll try to make very quickly. Regarding the state, one of the initiatives would change the state constitution to allow election day voter registration. It would not actually institute it, and so that's not going to affect us if it passes. Another would, as I mentioned, the governors would create same-day voting for the early voting period. This, that's not something we've discussed. Right now, we have early voting here by in-person absentee ballots, and that's actually a bit problematical. How do we deal with that? I don't mean to open that discussion now, although I maybe I just have. But, but in any case, it's not at all clear to me that the state initiatives would, would affect us. In fact, I think that they wouldn't. I will say that through my interest in doing this in the city, I've learned about these state initiatives. There is a coalition that I've been participating in that involves the ACLU, Common Cause, the NAACP, Progressive Maryland, something called Demos in Baltimore, Fairvote, and so on. We actually have a meeting with Sheila Hickson on Friday, and I'm trying to set one up with Mike Miller. And what, the reason I mention this is that it's important for you to know, but also that there could be organizations that have expertise in these areas that would be willing to provide technical assistance that would be invaluable to us, because having an additional municipality in Maryland that has created some of these reforms will bolster the case to do them at the state level. And then lastly, oh, just to, to, okay, I'll mention that with same-day voting, at least we have the Rockville precedent—
Mm-hmm.
we have the Rockville precedent, which is in conformance, one would assume, with state law, and we can, to the degree that we wish, basically copy the Rockville code, it has to be compatible with our charter and not just with theirs, and we might want to go beyond what they've done. The last thing I'll mention is regarding other ways to boost electoral participation, people have talked about additional voting centers here at Tacoma Park, that's expensive. People have talked about switching to even-year voting, that could potentially cause problems for our non-citizen voting because of U.S. immigration laws and so on. But, you know, there are all kinds of things that we should consider going forward, but I agree very much with the thought that we should focus on things, on a small number of things that we can do this year, and then do additional things next year, you know, as we have time, as we see what kind of success we've had with the, the first initiatives that we take. Thank you.
Ms. Merschel, did you have something else?
I just want to thank Ms. Carpenter for her ongoing work with the Board of Elections and on these election issues, and for your advice tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so we have direction to go forward with drafting and additional staff and legal work on those two potential elements of a charter amendment, and the Board of Elections has their information that they need on the RFP, so I think we've dealt with a number of elections issues tonight. Thank you all very much. We'll take a short break.
Thank you.
Come back for our last work session item this evening, and it's an important one, and it's going to take a while, and it's only part one of the discussion, we're going to continue it next week. I just want to say a couple of quick things about it. Just a reminder that we, as most councils, decided that it was a good idea to hold off until mid-year of the fiscal year to talk about potential additional spending. In the current fiscal year, in the past, councils have held off until January to look at things, because we didn't want to start spending money that was in reserves too early in the year, and then find out that there was something else that came up later, except when there were things, emergencies. I know one year, we had an emergency expenditure for some snow removal equipment that was It's also good to talk about things in the context of all the other possibilities, and that's what we're going to do this evening. You don't want to talk about something in isolation and think it's a perfectly good idea until the next one comes along, you think that's a better idea, and you wish you hadn't done the first one. And I think we recognize that there are always unknowns out there, but that some of those resolve as you go through the budget year. And they may not resolve completely, but they, at least, there's progress on them. Thinking about some of the most recent things, we have a little bit better idea of what our hope for eventuality will be on highway user revenues. I also think that, I heard correctly, that the full amount of police aid from the state is proposed to be restored in the governor's budget as well. We have the potential downsides of, we're not sure where the tax duplication discussion is going to go with the county, and we're not sure where the assessments are going to go, but we'll find that out in a couple of weeks. So hopefully, this evening, we can begin this discussion about both what we might want to do in the current fiscal year, and what direction we can give to the acting city manager as she and her staff put together the budget for our discussion starting in April. And I hope that this evening, we can go through the items in the packet, and that we can get all the way through those so that we have some presentation on those, some discussion. I think if we have questions as we go through each one of them that are for clarification, it would be helpful to get those out, but I, I think we have to recognize that, given the hour and given the time that this is going to require, that we probably just need to get our, our arms around this whole subject matter this evening, and kind of take a vantage point on this, so that we're looking at it from 30,000 feet, rather than getting down in the weeds and getting into the details of any one particular thing. So with that, I'll turn it over to the acting city manager.
Thank you. I'm here because during the last budget discussions, there was $1.4 million that was unallocated, consisting of $653,000, which was a late allocation from Montgomery County Council related to the municipal tax rebate for police services, and there was $750,000 in funds that the city manager had recommended committing towards a partial payoff of the 2005 community center bond. During the budget discussion for FY 2013, council felt that it did not want to allocate these funds until more information on the economic situation was available, and decided to review the use of those funds in January, and as Bruce said, there has been, some additional information has come in. We did meet in December to start identifying fiscal goals or desired uses of the funds. I've been meeting with staff to identify areas of financial uncertainty, things, projects that they are thinking may be useful, and some optional budget items, some wish list items. And so what I've done for the package tonight is try to compile this information, provide some background information. There's a lot of detail that's not here, but as I walk through this, I'll try to elaborate a little bit more about where the different items came from, and try to ask for some feedback from you. And I think, as, as Bruce mentioned, it might be next meeting, at the next meeting, that I get a lot of the feedback, but what I do want is by the end of January, to have a pretty good sense of the large parameters of the budget, so that I can give good directions to the staff for preparing their departmental budgets. And as I indicated in the package, there's some general questions that I do need to get from the council. The first has to do with what does the council want to do with the tax rate for the FY 2014 budget? Current property tax rate is 58 cents per $100 of assessed valuation, and as has been mentioned recently, the property assessments just went out toward the, all the residents of, all of the property owners in Tacoma Park, were all part of the same area that gets reevaluated every three years. The amount of money that we get from the property tax is estimated for this current year at a little bit over $14 million. What might happen with the assessments is the assessments could go up, could go down a little bit, and that affects how much money actually comes out when you apply the 58 cents to that amount. It may be that the number has to go up or down to get even the same amount of money as we've expected to get for this current year. It should be noticed that, noted that in the FY 2013 budget, our current year budget, the tax revenue was estimated to be $14,300,000, that's taxes and utility payments, and personnel costs were just under $14 million. So as the personnel and fixed costs rise, revenues also must rise, just to keep up with that. And then, of course, there's all the things we want to do, that we want to have, want to buy products, cars, trucks, we want to do projects, we want to improve services. There's a variety of things that we have to balance as we look through the budget. So besides, after you kind of think about this, giving me some direction about what you want to do with the tax rate, I'd also like to know if you're comfortable making fairly substantial decisions without a city manager on board about staffing and kind of long-term projects and that kind of thing. As I went through the varieties of projects that staff felt were on the table in their departments, a number of people said, you know, we, we don't know where the, we think there's different points of view among the council, and maybe there needs to be some kind of a process, a facilitation process to prioritize long-term efforts and that kind of thing, and that's something that we can talk about. And then, kind of on a short-term basis, is there something that you want to do during this current fiscal year, allocating some or all of that $1.4 million? this current fiscal year allocating some or all of that $1.4 million for use during this current budget year? As I mentioned, the property assessment may change due to the every-three-year reassessment. If you went to a difference as much as 5%, if, in terms of assessed value across the city, that magnitude would be about $575,000 positively or negatively. I also want to mention in terms of revenue that there have been discussions on the franchise agreements related to the cable television companies. Right now, we're looking at Comcast franchise agreement. There's been some talk among the municipalities and the county that there may be an opportunity to structure the franchise agreement or some related agreements to allow more of the cable grant money to be used for operating funds. And currently, we only get $72,000 as operating funds from, I think it's just Comcast. And so we have a situation where we have a lot of money in the bank for capital equipment, and we have a lot of staff that we have to have taxpayer money paying for. And we don't, I think, pay them enough, and we don't have enough staff. But it makes a lot more sense if we can get that money from the cable companies. So if there's some way that we can structure that, that's something that I certainly hope that we can, we can do to get the use of those funds. I know that there's a federal effort to try to get the cable monies to be able to just go to the general budget, to the general fund across the country. I don't know that that's something we'd be able to do in the short term, but at least within the Comcast or, and other cable company franchise agreements. We may be able to get more cable, operating funds for cable purposes.
Just on that point, on the, on the cable funds, my recollection is that we paid for a good bit of the work in the renovation of this auditorium, as it was appropriate with, with the cable funds.
Right.
For the, for the capital items. I heard you say that we have a good bit of money set aside on those, for those capital, potential capital items now. Is your sense that there's multiple years' worth of potential expenses so that if, if we did get the ability to do something, we wouldn't necessarily be robbing Peter to pay Paul, that we would be, still have plenty left in capital if we were using it for operating?
We have way more money than we can spend just to do the replacements or upgrading that, we would always save money out for upgradings. We have excess funds.
Okay. Councilmember Grimes, did you have a question?
No, I don't have a question. I have some thoughts.
Oh, okay.
Do you want me to, okay. The next item I just want to mention is the municipal tax duplication issue. And currently, it is under review in the county council's GO committee. As, has been discussed even on our email discussions, we have a lot of work to do, I think, to make sure that we get good return on municipal tax duplication for Tacoma Park and for the other municipalities. And so I think that's something that I have a big question mark in my mind about, about what we will be able to get. You know, the $675,000 was, by convincing the county council to give us some extra funds on that, I don't see that that's the kind of thing that we're going to be able to get. I think we need to make sure that we get a systematic, fair payment. And so that's going to be something that we'll need to work on very strongly.
And my sense, from seeing the various paperwork or emails on this to this point, is that the, that the GO committee is looking to come up with some kind of potential resolution on this as they consider the, the next budget, rather than it spilling over and going on like it always seems to.
We'll see how that goes. The next thing I'll just mention and highlight, and we'll get some more information as we get the next quarterly budget update, is that our speed camera revenue is lower than projected, partly because we can't charge late fees as we originally had, and there was some delay in implementing our new cameras. We certainly have a significant issue from the state legislature, and that the city of Baltimore is cost a lot of attention, negative attention on the speed camera program, even though our programs run very professionally and well and fairly. One of the things that our chief has indicated is that, after he's been looking through the numbers, we could be losing right now about $275,000 a year just from not being able to charge late fees. So it really is a fairly significant impact on our original projections. These speed camera funds fund several police staff positions, and they provide a lot of money for our sidewalk and traffic safety improvements. We're at the point where we are out of money now for this fiscal year on sidewalk projects, other than a couple of things that are just, we got the RICHIE program, and I think one other, but many of the things that people are waiting for would have to wait till next fiscal year unless other funds are identified for sidewalk projects this fiscal year.
And that's because the, the revenues are down, or we've been going along at a pretty good clip?
We've, we've moved along quickly. We've moved along quickly. And we've not cut back on what we project, on what we allocated for sidewalks. We've used it up, but we don't have those, we haven't identified that we have those excess funds to be able to move forward. We'll need to look at that closely.
And, and you're going to give us some information on, a reminder on what we're using for the police positions and all those kinds of things versus what we're spending on sidewalks?
That's right. The next item is highway user revenue. It is proposed to be higher this year for municipalities based on Governor O'Malley's proposed budget, still less than half of what it was in FY 09. What was given to us just recently, projected for FY 14, was just about, just over $90,000. The governor's proposal is just over $200,000 for the city of Tacoma Park. But in FY 09, it was over $500,000. So that's much better than $94,000 to get $200,000, but that's still a lot less than we need for, for highway user revenue maintenance. Just go over the undesignated funds. As I mentioned at the beginning, there was $1.4 million left undesignated in the projected general fund fund balance. It's something that you may decide to use now, or you may decide to allocate in different ways. I've listed council member mail's suggestions about ways to, that this, that these funds could be distributed. And, and there may be other ways as we go through this. There's also a number of other current year expenditures that we may wish to look at for FY 13 monies. As I mentioned to you several weeks ago, the police department would like to proceed with hiring a part-time emergency manager. Originally, they had had a position that was to be halftime emergency manager coordinator and the halftime supervisor of dispatch. We were not able to get somebody that had those two very different skill sets that made, made it make sense. And the police department determined that they really needed a full-time dispatch supervisor. So they've been proceeding with trying to get a full-time dispatch supervisor. They would like to proceed with advertising for a part-time emergency manager position. And it is something that would be very helpful within city staff. Another item is the proposal by Councilmember Grimes that the city's living wage law could be made consistent with the county's, that would affect some contractor and part-time positions in the city. And I think that it makes sense to actually move forward on, on raising that amount. I'm going to need to go through and identify exactly how much that adds up to be, but frankly, I think it's the right thing to do. It is something that, whether or not we expand this to the general, adopt the county's provision for other contractors, I do see, for our staff, I think it does make some sense, for the contractors that we work with on a regular basis. And I think if we are spending some more, or some of that $1.4 million, there's several one-time costs that I think are appropriate. One is the community visioning process. If there's a sense that we need to, as a community, try to decide, do we put emphasis on economic development? Do we put emphasis on environment? Do we put emphasis on some other kinds of city services or, or thoughts? And yet, try to keep the amount of money that we are taking in terms of taxes at a fairly steady amount. There needs to, you know, that can require quite a discussion. It's a big thought to do a full, community visioning process. It's very exciting when it can get done and be done correctly. An alternative is more, just a more focused, kind of facilitated discussion with the council and staff to try to prioritize some of these things so that we have a way to schedule them in and, and look and compare what's in the strategic plan. We have a recreation vision. We have, I think, some recommendations will come out of the sustainability action plan. There's a variety of things that it'd be nice to see how to, how they coalesce and, and how they can be prioritized and put into some kind of a multi-year implementation program. So that's something that I encourage, but it does also cost money to, to coordinate I personally would very much like to be able to hire an architect to address some kind of city facility needs. One of the things that is frustrating for me, and I'll go into it at the end of this presentation, is that this building is wearing. It gets really heavy use, and some of the things, some of the materials that were used aren't as durable as they should be for, for effective maintenance. Takes a lot of repair, takes a lot of time and money just to kind of keep some things up, and it still doesn't look right. And so there may be some different kinds of wall treatments, screen treatments that make some, that are both good for the environment and attractive, but also help reduce some of our maintenance effort, maintenance costs and, and labor. There's some things that we could see changing around a little bit, finding some storage, working to make some changes with the police department. The holding cells are on this floor, even though the police department is on the first level of this building. So there's some awkward things that would be nice to address. What I would love to see is an opportunity to have somebody, some fresh eyes, some talented eyes, come through, provide kind of a list of different options, the kinds of costs that might be involved, so we have something to work with and see if some of them make some sense. I don't anticipate that they would all be done in a short period of time, but it would be something, at least we would have a list and some recommendations as to the, what would make sense. And then the other thing is if there are some additional sidewalk improvements or other short-term capital improvements for this year, we could identify those. In talking with staff, there was some very interesting personnel-related discussions. And as people have kind of been looking and, and thinking about Tacoma Park, we, we really do have a fairly small staff for all of the services and activities that we provide. And it was good to add some positions for this current year. They're just now getting filled because it takes a little bit of time to do that. But the difficulty with adding positions to do these services is that that increases personnel costs, and personnel costs increase each year. And so what we might be able to afford this year, we also have to look in 10 years, what kind of impact that has, a cumulative impact about having increasing personnel costs. And so that's something that I've been looking, trying to look at a 10-year cost schedule for those kinds of things and think through what might that mean in terms of a need for revenue. This is an area where an emphasis perhaps on economic development makes some sense because having some better commercial tax money or some other kinds of things that, that really do help our tax base may be the best way to, for long-term economic sufficiency for Tacoma Park. One of the areas that workload has increased is our city TV staff. We have activities here in the auditorium all the time. We have things going on all the time, and it's wonderful, but we, you know, could use some more dedicated staff for that.
Do you have any form of, excuse me if you do, do you have any form of audience measurement, both for TV, whether over the web or the cable channel, and attendance at programs?
Not completely. I'll look and see what I can find for that because I think that's, that's helpful. We certainly have some things that are, have a lot of attention and are popular, and then we have other things that aren't. But there's different ways to count some of those things, and I'll see what we've got.
Yeah. So the thought is just that while it's nice to expand, that it might be more practical to realign the offerings?
That's true. The other thing is that we are making quite a lot of money off of rentals and renting this space, especially the auditorium. That money just goes into the general fund, doesn't necessarily come back to the staff. But that's, we've, well, I'll show you the, the funds that we've been getting and generating from that. And of course, part of this, I would hope we would get some cable money that would, that would help us offset the staff costs. The police department and Chief Goldberg have been looking through a variety of issues related to personnel, and in particular, worker compensation claims, sicknesses, that kind of thing. And Chief Goldberg has actually quite a lot of history in risk management and, and evaluating personnel, staffing issues. He's done some research and believes that our current 12-hour shifts are very difficult for officers over the long haul, that by having 12-hour shifts, basically, it affects your lifespan. If you get sicker, you get more injuries, and that if you go to a 10-hour day, a 10-hour shift, it's much, it cuts down those claims quite a lot. It's more humane for the officers. They don't necessarily like that because they actually like some larger time off. So that's, it's not, it's not something that, that the officers themselves are clamoring for, but it is something that would, in the long haul, be the right thing to do.
How long have we been on 12-hour shifts?
You know.
Five years, maybe?
It's been longer than that.
My recollection was Chief Kramer.
It was under Chief Kramer, yeah.
Did Chief Recucci evaluate this at all, so far, as you know?
He did not, and, you know, one of the things that, I mean, the biggest issue is adding staff is expensive. So if you go to, from a 12-hour shift to a 10-hour shift, you essentially need another beat's worth of officers because just the, the, how the schedule works.
How many officers would that be?
What he's asking for is five officers. It would be four officers for basically a beat and an additional officer for the SAT team. His proposal is to do this over a five-year period. I think it's something for us to evaluate and look at. My personal recommendation is that, I don't think we're in a position to start that at this point, but I wanted to raise it because I think it is important that, you know, as we look at what, you know, kind of how we do this, we've, we've looked at what's the cheaper option, necessarily what's the best option. And there are some cost issues, especially with our workers' comp, claims, that, you know, have, have raised questions for some time. And so it's something I wanted to raise with you. He'll be able to talk about it at another time, but I wanted at least to get it out on the table that this is something that he's identified that really would be the right thing to do if we could able, if we were able to do so.
And you've compared those costs, the costs of...
I've not, I've, I've not compared, well, it's hard to compare. We have pretty high claims for workers' compensation, people going out on retirement kind of early because, you know, they're, everybody thinks they're RG3, you know, that they can do this, and, and then you wear out. And so trying to look through and seeing, you know, how that compares is something that, so far, we've just been looking at research, it's hard for us to know. that, so far, we've just been looking at research, it's hard for us to know what we would actually experience in terms of workers' compensation savings.
And those workers' comp higher rates are concentrated in the police department?
Yeah, yeah. That's where we get most of them. I wanted to identify other items that have personnel proposals. One is establishing Sunday hours for the library and the community center. It's not, it's not an extremely expensive proposal, but it is something that would require some more staff. Councilmember Mail had suggested the extra hours primarily during the school season, and others have suggested it for a year-round program. The other I had mischaracterized, but Councilmember Grimes has proposed a community resource person at a full-time position with the city, and it's something that, do you want to describe it a little bit at this point, or?
Sure, I can do that very briefly. This is an idea that I've passed by some of the council members, but not all, and that I've been working on for probably over six months and have consulted a number of community members. It started with the senior village type of concept that's being discussed in a number of areas in Tacoma Park, and the idea is not to create city programs, but rather to have someone who understands county, state, and charitable programs in this area and understands the need of various needful Tacoma Park populations that would include not only seniors, but also youth, disabled, lower-income people, and help make connections. So that's the idea there. But I'll just take advantage of the moment to remark that this is the kind of new initiative that I would think the new city manager needs to own in order to make it successful. And to be blunt about it, I think that our experience with the environmental sustainability coordinator only reinforces that idea of that city manager needs to own something like this in order to make it effective.
Another item that I've put here is, has to do with our facility cleaning and maintenance I think that they have a very complex site here. There's been several discussions about perhaps it makes sense to have some, to either contract out that service, to have a hybrid system of in-house staff and other staff to make it work. That's something that we need to look at more closely. I don't have a proposal, but it is something I just wanted to raise that keeps coming up that somehow we need to do something about so that our facility cleaning program works a lot better.
Let me just make a quick comment on that, that when you say considering hiring out, I'll just remind my colleagues that the council had a discussion, I don't remember how many years ago, about contracting for maintenance, cleaning, maintenance facilities, and in the end decided that if it was cost savings we were after, it was, the cost savings came from basically not paying a living wage and not providing health insurance benefits.
Right, and so this is not something I'm looking at as a cost savings. I'm looking at some arrangement that gives us some better service, and I think there's a variety of ways to handle that. There's a number of city provisions and resolutions, council resolutions, that would guide, you know, how we might do that. I've mentioned here that under the new accounting standards, the unfunded pension costs will be shown as a liability in the city's financial statements. My understanding is that the primary impact could be, in the long term, making it a little more difficult to borrow money. We are going to be paying more, however, immediately on the police pension fund because we've changed the assumptions to make them a little more realistic. And that's, those are things that have been, you've been briefed on.
Is there another sentence or two you can say about the, how it might drive up long-term costs, or the kind of, the effect that it might have on bonding or something like that?
Well, the, make sure, Yvonne, if I say something wrong, let me know, but my understanding is that we have basically a financial statement that says we have X amount of assets. We have buildings worth whatever, and then we have our various liabilities, and we would show a lot more money on our liabilities than we have in the past. Where we now perhaps have a balance of about $30 million, it would be down to about $10 million as a, as our strength.
As kind of net assets?
As a kind of a net assets. Does that have an impact on us? It's something that we would have to see. This is actions that every municipal government is going through, so it's not something that's unique to us, but it is something that, you know, will show up on our paperwork when we are being considered for bonding.
So it could result in higher rates or something like that?
It's, yeah. It's one of those big question marks, we don't know. We have a number of capital improvements that have been suggested by a variety of folks. I did mention the community center building improvements that I'll go over in a bit. I do want to mention, though, that we, that one of our oldest buildings is our library, and we have a facility maintenance reserve that we've started putting some funds in towards the renovation or maintenance of all of our facilities over time. I think at some point in the future, we're going to have to think about what the fate is of the library building. Do we want to replace it? Do we want to think about it in a different way? Councilmember Siemens has thought about kind of rethinking the role of the library, and that might mean that the building itself needs to be something different, or it might need to be somewhere else, or it functioned in a different way. And so that's a process and a, kind of a thought process that we'll need to go through There's a number of projects in our larger community. We have the Flower Avenue-Green Street project. The first community meeting was this past week. We have a good number of funds, but in order to get a full build-out, we might need twice the amount. We'll have to see how that goes. Certainly, we have a commitment to building the basic portions of that street, which include the sidewalk and the low-impact stormwater work and resurfacing the road. There's a variety of other aspects that would be nice to have, and we're going to be working with the community and the architects to see, you know, what all the specifics are of that. We do receive a small amount of money from, in a grant, but there's other grants that we may be able to pursue. We may be able to pursue in the future other monies from the state, but we may also need a city match for some of those monies. And so that's something that we would have to look at. The Ethan Allen Streetscape project is proposed to require $250,000 for matching funds for grant applications that might go for that. BY Morrison Park improvements. We're looking at $20,000 to $30,000 for design and engineering, $40,000 to $60,000 for renovation and improvements. This is part of Tacoma Junction improvements. There's some other Tacoma Junction Streetscape improvements lower in the list, $100,000 to $300,000 for Streetscape Design and Traffic Engineering Studies. Obviously, we would love to have the state take the lead on that and pay for that. We are going to try to be meeting with some of the officials in a few weeks, but from State Highway, I have no idea where that might lead. There is a proposal to put in parking pay stations at some of our parking lots where you basically, whether at the co-op, near the co-op, or whether it's Ursula's Lot or some other of the various lots, something that would allow for people to pay for parking at a central pay station. To get a facility, the proposal, HCD staff says about $15,000 per location. We also have a situation where our existing coin meters on the street are, in some respects, kind of being out of date by just being coin meters. There's all kinds of other meters out there, you know, call meters, credit card meters, a variety of things. And we do have a little bit of pressure because I think one of our, the bags that we have to use to collect the coins, they don't make them anymore or something. And so we're getting to the point where we have to either make a decision and pay a few thousand dollars to go to the next kind of coin-collecting thing, or we need to move and update our meters. It's not an immediate thing, but it may be something that we look at going to pay stations on the street and get rid of the meters. One of the advantages of getting rid of the meters is that it clears up a little bit of space along the curb. We do need some spaces for handicap parking on the streets that can't have obstruction, so there's some things to work on, but it's going to take a little bit of time for us to think those things through.
Just a quick question, do we know how much revenue our parking meters generate right now citywide?
Do you know?
About $60,000.
About $60,000 a year?
Yeah. A lot of that's my money.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Well, you can pay in advance and we'll take double.
Yes?
This is the kind of area, is there any feasibility, any possibility of essentially contracting with the county to include Tacoma Park's parking meters in the county system and, you know, do a revenue split of some type?
It's worth looking at.
Yeah, it'd be interesting.
There's 6530 New Hampshire Avenue, which is, it's an empty ugly building on New Hampshire Avenue.
The one that used to be the post office at one point?
Yes. You know, there's a proposal, you could do a feasibility study to help mark it and help it move along and actually get something done there.
We've got an estimate, we already had landis construction walk through the building, and so this $20,000 estimate is a pretty solid number that would allow the owner of the building to probably make some decisions on exactly what's feasible to do with it, which is another long story.
Would this, would this money possibly be recoverable from the owner if it leads to something happening with the building, whether it's sale or, you know, commercial improvement? In other words, fronting the money?
I'm hoping that maybe they will front them. They'll come up with the $20,000 since it's their building.
Yeah.
But if failing that, then maybe we can get away with half of it. Partly, we want to put some money and do it so that we can actually then have, be a legitimate stakeholder in the discussions that ensue.
Okay.
And the current owner is some iteration of the Seventh Day Adventist?
It's the atomic conference of the Seventh Day Adventist Church that owns it and who we have been meeting with for the last six months. We've had numerous meetings to talk about the future of that building.
Okay. Winding Hill Way access. I don't know how many people here know where Winding Hill Way is.
I do.
It is?
Councilmember Smith does.
I Googled it.
Yeah, there you go.
You can actually, you know, you can actually get right down.
And look at the garbage cans, right?
I remember, I remember when it got formed and got a name.
Yes. Winding Hill Way actually runs from Flower Avenue near Piney Branch Road, down behind the houses that front on Piney Branch and come out just almost at Sligo Creek Parkway. The connection between Flower Avenue and this alleyway is actually a privately-owned lot. It's used as a driveway, access to a car repair shop and some parking areas. We use it for garbage pickup. Makes a lot of sense to have that access there for a variety of safety and other reasons. It would be something that would help facilitate and move along some development plans for that area, and hopefully some renovation and rehabilitation of the commercial properties in the area.
How much would be the cost of these improvements?
The actual, that would be something that a developer would have to put forward, but to have us have the actual street access would be useful to help facilitate the deal because there's a variety of property owners and that kind of thing. This is, getting the right-of-way easement or purchase here is actually one of the proposals in the long-wrench sector plan, which we'll get a presentation on next week. Then there's money for kind of the New Ave Boulevard, and we'll see how that moves forward. That ends up being a very important part, I think, of our whole economic development effort and also the effort about kind of the attractiveness and the perception of Tacoma Park all along. It's such a major entrance to this area, and if it looked really good, Tacoma Park, I think, would benefit financially from that.
So when would the state bond be requested and for how much?
Don't know. We've been having kind of discussions about that. Part of it will come out of the discussions that have been going on right now with, we've got, we've got a consultant on board that's working to see how realistic the concept plans are and how implementable they might be. And once we get that, then we'll have some better ideas of where we want to move forward on it.
And the Ethan Allen Streetscape would not involve state bond funding?
I don't know that.
Okay.
Then there's also a possible matching funding for potential environmental remediation at the Tacoma Junction City Lot, and not sure what might be needed with that. Most of these things are ways to facilitate good development and a stronger tax base in the, as an end result, and it would be great if we could get the assistance from outside entities, but we may have to put some money out.
Just back to the Ethan Allen piece for a second. Remind me of the status of that project. We've seen all of the presentations and?
I don't know.
We have, the gateway, we have, there's the design, but is there construction money?
I'm not sure. I have to check on that. I have a feeling that that's what this is about. I mentioned that we may need money for sidewalk construction plans. Wanted to talk a few minutes about the recreation center on New Hampshire Avenue. The sector plan calls for the building to be torn down and a mixed-use facility built that incorporates a recreation center. This presumably would be in conjunction with Tenacity or whomever, since they are the buildings that are right there, that can perhaps do townhouses or some other kind of residential closer to New Hampshire Avenue, but also have public recreation facility built into it. And that's a possibility. It's a fairly small lot that's usable, and so it hampers some of the design a little bit. It's why you pretty much have to do it in conjunction with Tenacity to make it successful in that location. Alternatively, the land could be sold for development and recreation services found another location on the eastern side of Tacoma Park. The Park and Planning that owns the property in Montgomery County that kind of is supposedly providing recreation services that we contract and do, but Park and Planning wants to move on this. They want to not have to keep maintaining the building. There may be a possibility that the city would end up having to just operate the building or do some other kind of thing with the building while we're in a transition in a development phase. We don't know what that might mean. We're starting to have several negotiations and discussions with Park and Planning staff on this. A group of us went and toured a similar kind of mixed-use recreation facility, residential building in Bethesda, and looked to see how that works. It's actually kind of cool. Whether or not that's something that translates to New Hampshire Avenue is to be discussed, but I wanted to bring it up that at some point, probably not too far in the future, we'll be coming to you to discuss some options about the building. There may be some money that we have to chip in as part of this. We would hope eventually to make a profit on the, you know, having a developer use the property, build on it, and then we'd still have a section of it that would provide the recreation services that are well-received there.
The Bethesda property, where is that located?
It was the Wisconsin Place. It's more, it's Chevy Chase.
Okay, and what was the cost for that development?
Well, it was phenomenal, but it was part of a huge, I mean, you know, it's just not really?
Comparable.
It's not comparable in terms of cost. What we were looking at more was? What we were looking at more was how did their twenty thousand square feet of recreation space function and layout as part of a different kind of a complex? And does it, because it's not what people think of when they think of a recreation center. And it was, it was pretty interesting and I thought we got some, some good sense of the size and how we might do things a little bit differently. But that was a useful kind of field trip to see how one functions. The money is a real different topic.
Have we thought about a joint venture with like an Under Armour? They give us money, we develop the building or develop a building and they can brand it? Have we considered anything like that?
Oh, I don't know. I'm not sure. I think we're, we're looking at a variety of options. We do like keeping recreation facilities in that area.
And you said twenty thousand square feet, is that what is kind of the, the planning ballpark of the square footage and how does that compare to what's there now?
It's, what we have now is less, but it's also designed so badly that it doesn't function very well. But it's, the twenty thousand is bigger.
Okay.
Probably about half of that.
Now we have ten and it would be twenty?
I think, I would say it's closer to ten than twenty, that's for sure. Good question.
Let's see, a couple more things, just in terms of capital expenses. If something, if we were to move on adding new police officers, that also comes along with police cars and equipment that go with those officers. There's also been discussion even recently about installing surveillance cameras in certain locations in Tacoma Park. Many of them are kind of only operated when something triggers it, but that's something that if the council and the police department are interested in pursuing, would have cost There are some mobile ones that you can move around that are a lot cheaper than kind of the traditional, more fixed cameras.
Yeah, Chief Goldberg has mentioned that mobile face identifying video cameras can sometimes be leased to a property owner for a period of time until the crime problem gets abated and then it can be removed and put elsewhere rather than building permanent things upon utility poles that just sit there.
Right. And there's some interesting features. Many of them have blurring technologies so that sides, you don't see people elsewhere. You just focus on the one crime area so that there's, the face recognition's only where the, the crime activities are happening or...
Yeah. Particularly useful where these gas station robberies have been going on down on the 6300 block of New Hampshire Avenue. Something like that might work.
In terms of some special operating budget items, there's a visioning or facilitation, facilitated discussion that we may want to pursue. I would like to consider having an IT audit or strategic plan to make sure that the city has the right software, hardware, training and controls that we need. I think having an outside evaluation of that makes some sense. We have a lot of interesting stuff. We try to do a lot of open source kinds of things so it, we don't fit into an easy off-the-shelf category and so we do need to have, you know, it needs some special attention. There's a proposal for a citywide market study. Certainly, in the discussion of the resident survey, there's been a lot of discussion about the kind of questions that might be asked about retail interests. It may be more appropriate to have a separate kind of a study and have a regular market study that doesn't necessarily just stop at the city's boundaries because people don't shop that way. And so, I need to find out a little bit more about what that might entail, but that's, that is an alternative. There's been discussion after the Ritchie Avenue discussions about having a citywide traffic study. It could be costly, but it's something that we can pursue. And HCD staff has indicated that there could be some enhancements to the Safe Droughts to School program with the addition of about a hundred thousand dollars in staffing and programming funds. And I'd need to get more information on, on what that proposal would be. Similarly, there's a proposal to add about ten thousand dollars to the We Are Tacoma series. It's one of the things that we put here and have a lot of, they're free programs that we offer here, but because they're free, the performers need some compensation. And so, if it's something that we think we need to bring people in to kind of balance out the mix of music or performance to meet the kinds of diverse needs of the different people in Tacoma Park, it may be something that we need to put some money towards. In terms of the community center, city facilities, construction and renovation proposals. I have a long list here. I'll go through them relatively quickly. There is a proposal, the funds in the budget to study adding a second floor in the second level atrium area. Councilmember Siemens has indicated that in particular, you want the open space floor in that area.
And two things on that. One is that I think we put some money in the budget last year to do the engineering assessment of that to see if, if the current pillars were sufficient for the supports to put in that floor. And of course, the benefit would be, and you mentioned earlier in your presentation tonight, that you, you need more room in the police department and that would be a great benefit. Plus, it would increase our community space as well.
So, that's, that's certainly, there is, I believe, ten thousand dollars in the budget for that.
And it reminded me, as I saw that, that, I'm not, I'm not sure it's anything that we want to pursue at this point, but I thought I'd just remind since a number of people on the council may not have known all the details as the community center was being planned and built and paid for, that the, it was originally supposed to be that it was an atrium with skylights at the top, at the top of that whole multi-floor area and that it was, it was designed for that, but essentially those skylight areas were filled in with solid roof so that the, if for some reason we decided that we wanted to keep it open and consider lighting it differently, that that's the way it was designed.
Right.
And of course, the other piece of that is the, it's not just providing more space for community and the police, but also it, it helps with the noise issue that, that we faced with the police department and the community space above it.
Yeah, I mean, then there is certainly noise in the building. If somebody's on the second level, it comes right into my office, so it's not...
That's my next year proposal.
Yes, fill in everything. I will say that one of the things that is nice is that even without the skylights, there is light that comes down into the police department area and that's, that's helpful. This is part of though, I think, the idea that I would really like to have an architect come in and, and use that expertise in giving some suggestions and thoughts about what makes sense. Improved storage options. I mentioned going on the field trip to the Wisconsin Place Recreation Center and they have really good storage. And they, as soon as they opened up, you know, one of their areas with the really neatly organized chairs and tables, and they saw us all swooning and every opportunity, they had to open another closet to show how nice it was, you know. It was kind of like the HGTV things, you know, where you see everybody opening the, the walk-in closets and go, oh, that's what I gotta have. Anyway, we, we do have a problem though because most of our storage right now is in our hallways. It's not a good place. We have, need to do some maintenance in this building and, and in this room. The auditorium floor needs to be refinished.
You're talking about this one?
This, this right here. Yep, this wood floor.
Yeah.
And a variety of other kind of items, even in this newer space, just the wear and tear of its constant use. You know, it does mean you have to attend to it. I mentioned earlier moving the holding cells from the police department to Level One and creating a Sally Port that isn't just bringing the guys past the basketball courts when we arrest them. And I think that there's some ways for, to get Justice Department grant money and some other things for, for some aspects of that. But it is something that I do think is an important aspect. And the way that we handle bringing prisoners into this building is awkward.
And wasn't that, to a certain extent, anticipated in, in the design of what we got so that there were some anticipated spaces for those and kind of we stopped constructing?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've got, we do have some...
So, we're not starting from scratch on this?
We're not starting from scratch, but we may want to do it a little differently than we, than was originally planned. But that's, yes, you had asked how many...
How many prisoners are there in a month?
I'll find out. It's a good question.
I mean, you know, if we're talking about relatively low traffic, then...
Right.
Which I'm kind of guessing we are, but I don't know.
I'll find out. Also in the basement, we have a server room that started out as a telephone room. It does not have the kind of air conditioning and things that you need for the, for the servers and, and other computer equipment that we have based there. Some fairly minor proposals for doing some renovation in the teen room. We are having the company that manufactured the signage for this building come through and identify, give us a price for doing some extra signage. We've got new places to sign, we've got some, we've got things like, it doesn't say auditorium on that entrance into the building. There's a number of places where we've got some out-of-date signs that we need to take down. We no longer have a Forsythia Room. I mean, there's some, you know, just some things. So, we're going to get a price and see what that, what that might entail.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You passed over something real quick that I, maybe I missed something on the teen room.
Uh huh.
I know that having been to, in the room and seen some of the, the activities going on, I know that one of the things that makes that room very cumbersome is having a restroom right in the middle of the room to break it in half. And I know that Mr. Clark has talked about really trying to change the programming for teens. And I wonder if you or he has given any thought to maybe removing that restroom and having a more functional space?
I don't know. I'll follow up on that with him. What he was proposing though was kind of a, a central, an area right opposite the bathroom that's a, a good staff base, that has some shelving, has some counter, so that you basically have somebody able to monitor both halves of the room because of that divided thing.
Right. And I wonder if that, that maybe there's other...
We want the best solution.
Right. So, I'll ask about that.
Thank you. I would, I would welcome, and I'm sure I'm not the only council member, a walk around. Maybe it can be done in an administrative function session if, or maybe not, whatever.
That'd be great. I'd love to do that.
Yeah, because I'd like to find out how Councilmember Siemens got in the teen room. I didn't think we were, we qualified.
I brought Mr. Schultz's ponytail.
Ah.
Yeah, he did. He borrowed it from me.
Yeah. So, there's a variety of places around and I'd love, I think it would make a lot of sense to, to do a walkthrough of this building and also as we get to the, the Public Works Facility, there's some areas that haven't been completed there that you should see as well.
Which reminds me, are we firm on that?
Yes. President's Day, February 18th, Monday, we will have a open house at the Public Works Facility. People can drop by and go ooh, ah, because it is pretty cool and have some displays about the various green aspects of the building.
February 18th?
Isn't that President's Day?
Oh, I don't know. How do I know?
And is, is that in the February newsletter?
I don't know.
I'm sure it is.
What time is it?
I'm not sure. I think it's like from 10 to 1. It's a, it's a midday opportunity. Well, hopefully you get Monday off.
Uh-uh.
Not that day.
Not gonna happen.
We'll let you see it anyway. Another, as you go through this building, you know, there's a couple areas like where our HR staff is, which is pretty open to the rest of the area, which they'd like a little bit more confidentiality. There's a couple other places and those would be things that I'd show you as we walked around. Obviously, I mentioned the library building at some point will need to be addressed. There are some additional aspects that need to be done to the Public Works Facility. It does not have the kind of security system and cameras that this building has. There should be some that at least monitor the gas pumps. And there are facilities there that weren't updated that at some point we'll need to figure out what we do with those. As I mentioned, I'd like to see green and durable improvements to the community center public spaces, including the hallways and meeting rooms and bathrooms. I really don't like the bathrooms, the public bathrooms in this building don't look very good. I'd like to move the vending machines to this level. I'd like some better use of lobby spaces on this level and upstairs. We've got this brick building in the back of the, brick shed in our parking lot, which is used for the storage for the police department getting rid of bikes that are unclaimed and that kind of thing.
But it was originally the ammo?
It was, yeah, it's where we used to keep ammunition. There's no reason to have it there. It's in a bad place for, it messes up the parking and you got trash cans that are right there in the way. I'd like to see that just kind of rearranged and, and we don't need that building there. And repave the parking lot and we have had a request for a plug-in station for electric vehicles. Consider that.
A request from?
Staff.
Yeah.
I don't know if other people also would like that, but that's, that is something that I have heard.
First come, first plug.
At that point, right now, that's what happens, so.
Good power script.
There you go. Yeah, we, we've tried a couple things. It's 10:40, but I guess what I'd like to know, if there's something specific that you know right now that you want to clarify or have me find out for next time, please send me emails if you've got additional things and it kind of comes to you over time so that next week I can kind of get some feedback out of all this.
I would like to see implemented a anti-litter campaign that has been an ongoing issue.
Right. And I guess, I meant to mention that, one of the things that is, is tough is that there's lots of really good kinds of things, like the anti-litter campaign, that don't take a lot of staff time, but they take some. And it's just, you know, some and some and some and some adds up. And so, part of this is just kind of identifying what are the priorities so we know how to allocate staff. And if that ends up being one of those, then we can put that in a work plan. Otherwise, we may have to find another way to do it or put it off. And so, that's, that's one of the things that we're just facing is that we're busy and I want to be doing the things that you as a group think are the priorities and the timeline that we can do that. Because we would really rather make everybody happy all the time and a lot of the projects are exciting and, and we enjoy doing them. We feel like they're wins when we do them. But we're really worn out. So, part of it is just trying to get the, the timeline and the priority list so that we feel like we're giving good direction to staff.
And there have been a number of people who have turned their lights on and then turned them off and the only one remaining is Councilmember Siemens.
I figured I'd hold back until March till next week.
Okay.
I just couldn't hold it anymore. No, I just wanted to...
Go back there.
I just wanted to take a minute and, and thank you, Susie, for putting this list together. I think, you know, you asked early on whether we wanted to wait until a permanent city manager was, was selected and in place. And I think what this list is demonstrating is your passion for the city and, and your, you know, historical knowledge and, and you really, I think, certainly included everything I could remember and many more items than I could, than I remembered. And I just want to thank you for that and say that I see no reason to wait on most of the issues for the selection of a new city manager. Thank you.
You know, I would concur with that. I just, I mean, I, you know, if the new city manager is going to be here in a matter of... of weeks, fine, but we don't know when this is going to happen and there's no point in waiting. A lot of the stuff we need to make decisions on now rather than the next, you know, because this is money we have now, right?
I guess one of the things that...
And if we spend it now, it'll be gone.
I guess one of the things that I think is important is that, as councilmember Grimes mentioned, you know, it helps to have a passion for some of these things and to, and to understand it, to move it forward. I think that one of the things that's, that is difficult is that many times individual councilmembers think that the city manager understands where they want to go, but the city manager may be thinking, "Well, that's just one person's view. Is that four or five of your views?" And so part of it is, is trying to figure kind of as a group, how that all fits together. And that's, I think that's the, that's the challenge. The other thing that a different city manager, a new city manager may bring is knowledge of a different way to handle police staffing or some of these other things that, you know, may add important information to making those decisions. So I did want to at least mention those.
Councilmember Daniels, go on.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm going to underline what councilmember Siemens said and I'm going to say, "Yikes."
That's what I said.
"Yikes and holy schmazoli."
I would have never said that.
This is, this stretches $1.4 million a very thin way. I mean, it's, it's, it's huge. And, and as you went through each option, that one seemed to be the most important. You know, I mean, there, you know, what can we do if we closed in the, the, the second floor? What kind of facilities could it, could it enhance for the building? And, and then I don't, you know, architects are wonderful, but they cannot spell storage. They have a very difficult time considering that, that function of where do you put the stuff? So, I mean, there is no storage in the building. You point, I'm like, "Yeah, all the chairs and the tables are sitting out in the hallways. There is no place to store anything in this building." So, I mean, it's, you know, really incredibly comprehensive. What a great job. I know some of us, some of the council helped out a bit, but you really have a handle on what, what needs to happen here with the building and with the city itself. Thank you.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you. There are a couple of things. Certainly in the issue of waiting for a city manager, I would not make that choice because most of these issues are issues for the council, you know, that are appropriately before the council.
Right.
The other is that in part, the more of these things we decide before we make a hiring decision, the more the candidates have a chance to decide whether the things we decide on are the job that they want to have. And frankly, that's a good way to get a, be a better match in the hiring process. I'm, I'm going to hold all my detailed comments for next time, but I think in general, there's things that are clearly teed up here that we could move forward with now, with resources we have now, but a lot of them are next year, second year, the third year and fit backed with, councilmember Shultz had mentioned this before, with our strategic plan, you know, where they, how they fit with our strategic plan. So choices around new library, rec center, this building, you know, they all, they all fit in that context. Just that one last comment is with regard to sort of the facilitated session and the visioning process. That's again, a place where I, I would rather move forward rather than launching another visioning process, because I think although we may all sometimes talk about or emphasize different things, I think there probably is a list of stuff that we could get considerable consensus to move forward on.
Be very good.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I think one thing that we need to, we need to keep in mind, something councilmember Mail just alluded to that made me think that, think this, and that is, is that while it's all well and good for us to get excited and say, "Well, we've got some money here that we need to," or we can think about putting to some practical uses, all of these things, as you would say and have said, take staff time to actually carry out. And when your plate's already full and you've got, we've got new employees, thank goodness, I guess all of those positions have been pretty much filled that were created.
We got Jesse's assistant to come.
Still one more to come. And it's going, it takes each of them a little while to get up to full speed. But we just, I'm just, all I'm saying is, is that we need to take, take that into consideration. When we say, "Oh, well, this would be, this would be my first choice, this would be my second choice," is that there's only so much that you guys can cope with, right?
Thank you. That's true. But frankly, if you say, "This is first choice and this is second choice and this is third choice," then we're able to, to do it a lot better than saying, "Yes, we want it all." And so I think that's one of the things that, you know, in identifying some of these things, especially if you look through the list that HCD identified of different parts of this, you know, these different projects that need some capital monies and grant monies. If there's a, if there's a priority list in those, sometimes it comes because we see a grant fund and it looks perfect for it, then we're going to jump on it. But otherwise, if there's, if there's a preference that you have, a priority that you have, you know, we're able to focus those, that staff work one after the other, which is a little easier to handle.
Sure.
And I'll just add that one thing I want to make sure that I think you have on your list is to make sure that we get the answer on the police aid.
Yes, I've, I'm asked about that.
Right.
It would, if it, if it's back to what it was, it gets us, I think, another $100,000.
Which we could use. And I want to add my thanks to you for this comprehensive list. I think it's really helpful to see all of this together and it kind of gives us a little bit more of a big picture so that we can keep some of these things, even if they're not immediate needs, in the back of our minds and not be surprised when they pop up. And it's, I think it's going to be easier to conceptualize how we might want to add some things for going forward in the current fiscal year and some direction that we can give you, even if it's not as specific as it could be, it would be helpful in figuring out how to put together the FY14 budget. And it looks like councilmember Daniels Cohen and councilmember Grimes each have additional comments.
This is, we kind of, it was pretty big on the first page. We're paying 58 cents on, on $100 of property tax and it yielded 200,000-plus increase revenue. What would cause, how much of a decrease would cause that to be, what's, what I'm looking for? A lower to remain constant? What, is it a penny per hun, or is...
You know, we're not going to know until we get the, in mid-February, we'll get, we'll get a sense of that. What this information was, was that in, for the current year, the assessed value citywide increased by one and a half percent.
Right.
And that added up to 203,000.
$200,000, yeah. And would, if we did lower, you know, use this money to lower the taxes a penny or whatever, then does that look like the next time there's an assessment, the city council will have to raise it back up again? The answer is yes, Kay, you silly person.
And you always have a choice about what you put it at, it just means how much we have to spend.
Okay.
Councilmember Grimes.
This was actually the topic that I decided I would remark on this meeting, which is that I would hope to allocate at least part of the money that we're discussing now to controlling the tax rates and in particular, I did note that the estimate, it's purely an estimate, if we do lose 5% on the average valuations, that's the taxable assessments, then that would equal 500 and where was it?
Eighty-five?
Eighty-five. 575 and that's fairly close to the 653,000 plus that we received in unanticipated funds from the county last year. So I would, I would hope that we could allocate a portion of the overall 1.4 million to controlling the tax rates for FY14. It's the only remark I have for the moment.
Okay. I think we've gotten our, look at the overall sense of things and we'll come back to this next week, continue the discussion and we'll add in the piece on the large grant. And I think we were also anticipating maybe a week after that, sometime soon, coming back for the additional small city grant process where we had part two.
Next week should be pretty easy. We'd just say, "Yes, we want all these things."
Right. Yes. We won't get any city management came in. Need for that.
Thank you. We're adjourned.